We call the regular meeting of Paradise Irrigation District Board of Directors, Wednesday, June 21st at 6:30 PM. And the call to order, let's see, have I got it here? I guess I have something to read up here, which I normally avoid. The Board of Directors, or its President pursuant to Government Code Number 54954.3, reserves the right to impose reasonable regulations governing public participation on agenda and non-agenda items, including limiting the total amount of time allocated to public testimony or particular issues for each individual speaker. That's a carryover from an old board. So, it says, "Please silence your cellphones." Unfortunately, my cellphone is my clock. Who would like to do the opening prayer tonight? Any volunteers?
Yeah, go ahead.
I don't want to fight with you.
Let's stand for an opening prayer. You don't have to participate if you don't want to, and then we'll do a pledge of allegiance.
Father in heaven, thank you very much for the blessings that we have in this community, and especially recently with all of the water we've been blessed with. Thank you for the natural resources, and so many things that we are blessed with. The natural resource of water especially is what you've given us the authority to deal with, and may we indeed be good stewards. May we be wise on the board, and wise to listen to counsel from the community as we deal with this. Now bless this meeting this evening, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call, Georgiana.
Director Blom, Michael.
Here.
Director Hamlin.
Here.
Director Marzola.
Here.
Vice President Jacobson.
Here.
President Phil Pellet.
The first thing on this is approval of agenda order. Does anybody want to change any item in the order of agenda? This is something new. This is the first time this has been on the agenda, and I'm aware of, because I called and asked Georgiana about it when I saw it. So, is there any board member who wants to change the agenda at all? It will take a few minutes for you to look at it, because this is something new. We'll just keep it there and see how we do with it.
It looks like you did a good job of putting it in order, and it looks good.
Well, I think Georgiana and Kevin get most of the credit for the agenda.
Well, we had some suggestions, you know, vaccinating, so, you know, we're willing --
One of them was the committee reports are in different place now. I'm glad to see them where they are.
Good.
I don't see any need to change the order, it looks fine to me.
Okay.
I was just going to say --
Do we need to vote on that?
No.
No.
Okay.
You know, in the past, we had some comments, because some public members were interested in hearing your business, so, we have a consultant here, and he might, you know, consider maybe a consideration.
Isn't that the kind of thing that with our previous discussion that you would probably automatically do? Just agendize it?
I do, but we do business, because we do this on that end, and we do this further until, you know, on the agenda, so.
Well, in my thinking, from our discussion, that's the kind of thing that would be done, hopefully by the President and staff, is if there is somebody from out of town that's got a three-hour drive, then let's try to agendize them higher. Isn't that correct? Isn't that kind of where we want with this kind of thing?
Yeah, usually a last-minute agenda change. Kevin wants to talk to this, too.
Yeah, this creates that the board itself can do that, so that we're not having to reformat the agenda based on our assumption that someone's going to be here.
Right.
So, if we have someone from Sacramento, then you can say, "I move to move item seven B to above the approval, the consent calendar," or something like that.
Or whatever, yeah.
So, you have the option of do that, and then we can keep the format the same going forward.
Yeah, I think that's great.
Mm-hmm.
Works.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Approval of minutes, special meeting, May 12th. This is all part of the consent agenda. Unless you want to pull something out, we'll approve all this at the same time. Regular meeting, May 17th. Approval to authorize two free parking and boating days at Paradise Lake. I'll just mention that we talked about that in the Lake Committee this morning, and everybody agreed that was a good idea. Only, I had a comment, you know, efficient game regulations could change. They said, "Well, we want to do it from now on," and I said, "Well, what happens if efficient game changes their idea?"
Sure.
It might change in the future from that. Accepted of updated invoice, fees and so forth, and approval adopt resolution. Okay, I'm going to ask for that to come out as a separate item, placing nomination Kevin Phillips as a candidate for, I want us to vote on it separately. Do I have a motion to approve the rest of the consent calendar?
Motion approved. I approve, a motion to the approval as stated by you.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have one question. In the, in today's packet, there was a section on the report from the water treatment plant, and Jim, maybe you can answer this question for me. There was a approval of a bid for aluminum sulfate from Sierra Chemical Company, and I don't know if it's appropriate to bring it up now, because I don't know if it was actually a purchase from this prior approval, or if it's since then and between today's date. So, maybe you can clarify when that purchase was, that bid was actually approved? Because it says bid approved on our packet for today, for Sierra Chemical, for aluminum sulfate purchase. I didn't see it on a prior financial, and so, I don't know if I just missed it, and it was on the prior financial, you know, check register, and I just didn't see it? Can you clarify that?
Well, my bid to chemical, I had two bidders only. Took the lowest bid, that was about a month ago, and since then, we placed one order.
But --
That one order will be good for a whole year.
Okay, but --
I'm not sure if I understand your question.
Well, my question is, do I get into it now before we approve the minutes from last month's meeting, or do I wait to discuss it? So, I wanted to know when that actually happened, if I just missed it. I don't think I did, and what you're telling me is, is that it probably wasn't on last month's.
Well, it was, I think, the amount was within his authority.
Okay.
And, but I have, the summary of the bids are available, if you'd like to see that.
Sure, no, that's fine, we can get into it later, I just, but it didn't have to do with the minutes from last month that we're approving?
I don't believe so.
That's what I had, so, so then --
Georgiana, do you have a couple? I left my, just realized I left my bound agenda at home, and I can see that Cliff doesn't have his. So, is there a chance you might have a couple extra copies of the agenda for tonight, the binded one with all the explanations in it?
Yes, I know I have.
I usually just get the PDF.
Well, you get it off of there.
Yeah.
Do you have a copy? I'd like to have a copy, because I write notes.
So, to get back to your, that was the only question I had, and we can, so, to get back to approving the minutes for last meeting, call for roll call on that, as soon as Georgiana gets back.
Didn't we already vote on this?
Well, no.
No, we haven't. I just asked for one thing to be taken off of it, and it does call for roll call vote.
Oh, got it.
Georgiana has to call roll call. Thank you.
Director, I think we're ready to vote.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Georgiana.
So, well, you started that, so you, go ahead and read it, yeah? On approval of minutes for last month?
You're approving the consent calendar.
It's all part of the consent.
Yeah. Yeah, we already voted on it and passed it.
Sorry.
Yeah.
No, we didn't, I had a question on it, we never voted.
No, yeah, we didn't, we didn't vote.
We didn't vote.
It's a roll call vote, Dan. It's not --
I questioned an item.
I'm sorry.
Since, I mean, since we pulled the resolution off, we don't really, we don't need to do a roll call.
Well, we don't need --
No.
Since that resolution has come along.
Okay, can we have a --
We can take the vote, though.
Okay, well, I didn't realize that. I've only been here 10 years, Georgiana, you have to have patience with me.
So, vote, right, vote to approve other than E.
Right.
All in favor?
We have a second again.
We do have a second.
Right, a second, is that?
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
We did.
That's true.
Can we reverse that and see if we did that? I could have sworn that I said aye once already.
I pulled E off the agenda. I'm not going to comment on it, but I would like the other directors to comment on this, whatever opinions they have, and I won't vote either. So, if you guys want to say anything about approval adopt resolution 2017-09, placing nomination Kevin Phillips as a candidate for the ACWA Region Two Board, please make a motion for that, and we'll talk about it, if you want to talk about it. I don't really know if you want to talk about it.
I make a motion that we approve the adoption of resolution 2017-09.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on it?
Any questions of Kevin about it?
Sounds like a good thing for us to nominate you, to me, so.
And there's no doubt in my mind that he'll do a good job and represent us very well to the public and the ACWA.
Absolutely.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Yes, it is.
That's when we go into this.
That's right.
Director Michael?
Yes.
Director Rice?
Yes.
Director Solak?
Yes.
Vice President Jacobson?
Yes.
President Pellet?
Abstaining. Not voting for. Could say no, if that'll make it easier for you. That's where I'm at.
No?
No.
That's just, no is easier.
Okay. Public participation. Individuals will be given an opportunity to address the board regarding matters not scheduled on the agenda. Although the board cannot take action on any matter not on the agenda, comments will be limited to five minutes per speaker. Opportunity for public comment on agenda items will be provided at the time they are discussed by the board, with comments limited to five minutes per agenda item. Board, looks like you wanted to talk about something.
Good evening, Ward Habley. On numerous topics, let's see if I can do this in five minutes. You know, if there's opportunity for praise, I like to pass it on. And for those of you who have traveled Wagstaff lately, you might have noticed, as of last Friday, there was water percolating up through the street, right around near Forest Lane. It was there, a little bit larger leak on Saturday and Sunday, and by Sunday evening, it was traveling down the road about 15 feet. Now, that's not a lot of water, but I thought, you know, I'll let, I'll let my friend Jim and my friend Keith know about this by email, and I got a response back about 7:30 Monday morning that said, "It's on our agenda, we'll get to it eventually," and Tuesday morning it was fixed.
Wow.
That's pretty cool, isn't it? It was not a big leak, but you know, once they become aware, they get on them. I'm pretty proud of that. I was gone May 30th to June 3rd. I'm the representative from the Butts District of Garden Clubs to attend the State Convention of Garden Clubs. That represents 17,000 garden club members and 4,000 plant society members. I speak on behalf of Government Affairs and Legislation, as I am the chairman of that committee. So, every two years, I attend those four meetings and make reports on that behalf, and a lot of what I provide, in the way of information on those two issues, comes from quotes that I get from Aqua. The Association of California Water Agencies, which we've heard our attorney refer to on numerous occasions, is one of the best pieces of information about what's going on with water. Frankly, better than the state's website. And as of that time, we had three pieces of legislation that were already on the Assembly floor, and two that were in appropriations, and there is still difficulty with two of those that are getting out of there. However, that was my end of my two-year service of Government Affairs and Legislation Chair. I am now the Chair of Water Conservation and Education, and that was based on the fact that I represented the Northern California District, and since our convention was in San Luis Obispo, and most of the attendees were Southern California people, they have recognized that in Southern California, they have not done a very good job with education in conservation measures. They brag about getting from using 600 gallons a person per day down to 400, and I'm saying, you know, in Paradise, we did 77 gallons per person a day, and that was unbelievable to them. And I said, "It's not unbelievable if you do some education about water conservation." I also passed on information about aquahawk, and got no response. Not a single person in attendance there, other than people who are from Northern California, had heard of aquahawk. I was a bit surprised about that, but I said, "If you can get aquahawk with smart meters, you will find out it's much easier to do water conservation and education." But we ended up with a reputation in Northern California for a better effort in water conservation education than those representatives for the same issues in Southern California. I recently attended a meeting at Paradise Guilds, where the guest speaker was from Aqua Alliance. Their emphasis is with the Sacramento River and the water tributaries they're associated with, and the misuse of the Sacramento River water. Generally, they are active when executive and legislative branches of government fail the people, so their emphasis is on using the courts to remedy bad water issues, and they have some active issues at this time. Their local, their emphasis locally is that local resources should be kept as local resources, including local water resources, whether it's by stream, or by pond, or lake, or by ground, but also in treated wastewater as a resource. Aqua Alliance is not in favor of the sewer line to Chico. I thought that was interesting. The Town of Paradise has an upcoming meeting to update the public about the sewer proposal to Chico. I think this is a problem, especially when it concerns PID and water conservation. Here's the problem with this. This will remove water as a source currently in our soil, by eliminating septic tanks and leach fields. Okay? To make up for that, where vegetation will start to dry, we have to increase irrigation to an equal or greater amount, because we irrigate from the surface. Leach fields are below the surface. That's a resource for us. The problem with that is, is that some people just won't do it. They will continue to conserve water, and for the .98 million gallons a day that Mark Maddox, the town engineer, was proposing, that would be an awful lot of water to offset through irrigation. A ridiculous amount. And frankly, that's not the number that PID gave him, but that's the one he's using in his proposal. And the problem with vegetation drying up causes a significant increase in our fire danger, and I think that's a very bad position for this town to be in. I would encourage PID and this board to go against the Town of Paradise and their proposal for a sewer to Chico. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ward, for your efforts with conservation, because a lot of this probably would not have been achieved to the degree that it was without your efforts, and we are very grateful for that. Thanks a lot.
We have a very active and advanced water conservation committee.
Yeah, I know, it's a committee, but you're a large portion of that, so.
Just one member.
Yeah.
I think he takes more speaking time than anybody else.
Yeah, that's right. We got such a crowd tonight to talk to.
Would anyone say something?
Well, I haven't done anything except hang around for a long time, but I can keep it, and I owe you guys. I came tonight just right to get it, because I knew you missed me.
We did.
I'm sure you've all heard of the Oaks Lodge, and the Moos, the Golden Eagle Museum, and the Lions, and the Senior Center, and all of these organizations are desperately trying to get new members, and to hang on to their old members, and they're having a hard time doing this. And they all used to have really neat newsletters, at all times. Scott, now, the one page newsletter is about the limit. They don't mail out anymore, they email to you. I think the Senior Center's the only one that still mails their newsletters, and those they print themselves on the street near the office. Paradise Irrigation has a gas station, you don't have to run out and holt out people to buy your water. We don't have an option, so you're stuck with us. But we have huge payrolls. Yes, there are expensive projects, like a table, this way, three months. Yet you pay even beyond a room to create a fire, a full color, pretty expensive fire. Those are cheap when you print both sides of the code, and they don't have to be even a month. I don't know why you'd buy yourself. Dale and Tony, I'd say you're pretty, they're super people, really nice, I've known them for a long, long time, and they certainly do a good job, but you don't need it. You haven't lost one customer. So, don't spend all this money on PR work. I understand you're now reduced, like you want to pay him with $30,000, but $30,000's more than most people that live by Jack, but also make $30,000. That's a lot of money for some people, for something you no longer need. You don't need, you don't need PR. You could put a paragraph of what you're doing, or something you wanted the public to know, on your bill. The bill's big enough, you're small on there, and it would be free. You can write something.
You just --
That wouldn't cost too many either. I think you're working, it's really trying to do a good job. I know you're trying to change a lot of things that were done in the past, because I stood up every morning, and I'm proud of you, even if you don't know if you voted or not. If you're married, you are the only water company we got, so don't waste our money on PR work. In fact, you know, if somebody knew how much money you had paid to Dale and Tony, they would be out here out of fits every week, because they need to pay them a lot of money. And not that they're not sweet, but you don't need them. So, thank you, thank you guys, for putting up with me for years. I'll be back again, I can watch this. Because he's watching.
Loretta, I got a comment. It might be interesting, and I don't know what's going to be the result as I continue to do it, but I have asked probably 30 people over the last month, maybe month and a half, about specifically what you're talking about, and I asked them, I don't lead really, but I say, "When you get your various utility bills, with all of that stuff in them, what do you do with it?" And every one of them says, "We just throw it all out." We throw it all out.
I said, "What do you think of that fire in your PID lead? They don't even know what I'm talking about."
Right.
Loretta, you're going to have an opportunity on committee reports. Tonight, we're going to hear Community Relations Committee report, so you could ask them questions concerning the PR and everything else, because it's actually part of our business tonight. So, yes, tonight.
What time?
In about, let's see, depends on how long we talk. Say 20 minutes. Well, maybe we'll make them the first committee, so it'll be right in.
Maybe I'm going to pay you two guys. I've got to huddle all weekend.
Okay, they'll save your time.
Loretta, oh, I want to say, I have not received a water bill in about four years. I have delivered my back today, to see how much a page of a huge one. And I have asked, and asked the office, and my gal said, "Well, did you ask for a water bill? Did you request a new water bill?" He said, "I didn't know I had to request that." You can have a little gal in there saying, "You are..." Let me tell you, she's a sweetheart. She got me a water bill. She answered all my questions, she knew what she was talking about, and you need to compliment her. Thank you, thank you guys.
We'll do it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Loretta.
Keith, too, he was at my house.
Well, we'll put the community, we're doing committee reports now, information items only.
Loretta, just for a notation, Mark and Tanya used to be here every meeting, they're not, they're not here now, so we've backed off a little bit on that, so.
I can't, but Tom, can I?
Yeah.
Have you, you lost your attorney, what happened? There is a new attorney, so this will look better than the old one.
Okay. All right, board oral reports regarding their representation on commissions and committees, and number five will become number one now, and Directors Rice and Sulik, and Sulik, Mark, you're the chairman.
Sure. Where is, I don't even have my report here. Yeah, web design, Mickey Rice is our IS person.
Rich, Mickey Rich.
Mickey Rich, excuse me, not Rice, excuse me, Ann Rice, Mickey Rich, got it. She's working on new web design updates, and making the website more user-friendly, and you'll be able to go on there and look at reports, and they'll be easier to access, and this kind of thing, so. Do you, anybody use the website at all, any of the folks here?
I tried to find what your meetings were, I looked it up on the computer. I'll tell you what I found. No place for you on it, only that I thought I went to. This whole page of PIDs and PIDs, I find, that is important.
I thought it was on the front left.
I decided to find, well, who the council was.
Right in the center.
Or right in the center.
That's one of the things that Mickey redesigned, so the meetings are listed right in the center of the web, of the main webpage.
Well, that's old, far, it's hard to look on that stuff, but I have a whole bunch of files.
We're trying to make it easier, actually.
You are.
Loretta, I'm younger than you, and I have problems, too, with the webpage.
We all do, believe me, I'm, you're not alone.
You have to sleep for seats different places, if you spend one, make sure you have your ticket.
Then we got Party in the Park. We were actually going to participate in Party in the Park this Thursday, tomorrow night, but it was canceled because of the heat, so I guess they're going to, they're going to reschedule that particular, you know, Party in the Park.
I work there every Thursday night. I've been there for years.
Don't go tomorrow, nobody will be there.
Yeah, don't go tomorrow, because I'm not going to be there. But we are participating, and in, what, six, six of the events, I believe it is, and each event, we're going to have our booths, and Mark and Tanya, Tanya or Mark, I should say, are going to man the booth, and we're also going to have either PAD employee there to talk about, and this is PR, I realize that, but I think it's good PR and good public outreach. And then at one of the meetings, the directors have volunteered to take an hour each at the booth, and answer any questions for people that want to come up and top this, so. So, I think it's a really great outreach, you know, opportunity, shall I say, at Party in the Park, and I like it, I go there, so.
And I've never seen you there, and I'm there every Thursday. I testified, I said, "Right there, I feel, it's the only job I've got, right, because I'll be worried."
But there's only been one so far, hasn't there?
Yeah, there's only been one.
Now, do you know where she is? She's down on, right at the street, right at Pearson.
Oh.
She sits down there, everybody knows that Loretta's down there, on the street.
Well, I am, this would be red last year.
Yeah.
That must be the --
Yeah.
But now, why are you paying taxes? Who gave you the tax?
Okay, let's try, let's eliminate, so.
Yeah, yeah, okay, we're going to go on --
I'm not trying to, but I'm trying to move, I don't want to --
Community Relations Plan, we discussed, we're going to be revising our Community Relations Plan, it needs to be updated, okay? There is one in place, but we're going to update that plan, so there's actually a plan you can refer to about how we communicate with the public on Paradise Irrigation activities, district activities, so we're going to be, we're working on that right now. We've got some goals to set, so we're working on the goals as the first part of that. Water Talk News, again, we've already kind of briefly talked about the Water Talk, which is the newsletter. Let's see, we want to, we want to include more articles in there about employees. I think there has been some articles about employees, you might have noticed. In other words, we want the customers to be able to get to know the district and the district employees, and what they do. What is someone's job? What are they actually doing? So, that way, it informs you, so, so when, you know, when you, when you think about PID, you'll be thinking about, "Oh, yeah, that person works on the pipelines, I know what that person, sort of knows what, know what that person does." So, that's, that's one of the goals we have on the Water Talk, is try to get that kind of information out, to talk about the district, and talk about the actual personal. New bill format, we've had some ideas about, and that just came up, maybe you had the idea of putting some information on the water bill. Ann Rice is, has some great ideas, and we've been working with Laura, as a matter of fact, in the office, to change the water bill and actually add more information in there, so you, there can be a place for some notes and informational items, and then also, there'll be more information about your water usage, you know, basically how many, how many gallons you actually use, or acre feet, you know, vice versa, so. So, I think that'll be a great, great addition. So, so I think that'll be a great, great addition. And then finally, community relations training for staff. We, we want to have some training for the staff here at PID on community relations, because it is really important, because we want, we want the staff, and the directors as well, to be, for PID customers to have faith and confidence in what we're doing. And so through some training on public relations, we'll be able to communicate with our customers and have a two-way conversation. And that's, I think that's where we want to be, and that's kind of our, our goals, with the training and communication. Please, Anne, help me with, if you have any other comments.
She's a good job.
She's on the, she's on the committee with me here, so.
Does anybody have any questions from the public on the committee report?
Just questioned Mark's last comment there about employees and the community relations. I've been in contact with numerous employees, and I think their public relations skills are very good. I mean, for people who are technical people.
Right.
Their communication skills and their relational skills with customers, I think is really good. Even under bad circumstances, like when they're shutting off the neighbor's water and the neighbor's screaming through the window.
Right, right.
Their ability to be level-headed, calm, cool, collected, is pretty good, in my opinion.
That's fantastic. Thank you, Ward, I appreciate that.
It is.
And I know you're a lot of them, so.
Yep, they are, they're good people.
Do you, board members have any questions of the community relations committee? Kevin? No? Okay, thank you very much for a good, very good report, and you're doing your homework. You're finally feeling it comfortable where you can get after it. Ad hoc treatment plant operation review committee, it's turned out it's the same, two directors only, Anne is the chairperson.
You want to do the finance first, number one?
No.
No?
Do finance last.
Okay.
We just swapped them out.
Okay.
Actually, Georgiana made the decision, she put the ad hoc water committee report up on the monitors.
Oh, okay. So.
Okay, thank you.
So we did hold a meeting on May 18th, it's in your packet, the minutes, with a couple of, some information on the Miners Ranch project and related projects that StanTech has been involved in, so if you have any questions, ask.
That's the project where we're going to replace the latter dam with the concrete?
No, this was actually, part of the ad hoc water treatment committee was for us to work with the operations staff about, I think the thrust of it actually was chemical feed, but we started with inviting Miners Ranch people, because they had a plant similar to ours, where they were discharging their backwash and filtered waste into their raw water reservoir. And what, they have a $25 million upgrade expansion going on right now, that includes about $4 million of it to deal with the solids and water, backwash water. And so we listened to what they, you know, their, their history and highlights, and then their chemical feed, they use different chemicals than we do, and they, we toured, you know, our chemical feed and the ponds, and we just kind of exchanged information. And probably the, the last sentence, they, they said that at times they were able to not even feed alum, just cationic polymer, and they used a different brand, a Nalco, and Jim was, said he would be interested in inviting them up to do some jar testing and evaluate their products, and that's the, that's what came out of it.
Are they having byproduct problems, and they're?
They never violated for any constituents, but they wanted to get rid of their MPDES permit.
Okay, so they want to close the system.
So, so had they, did they have a final permit for discharge limits from regional water?
They're, for the first year, under this new expansion, they will continue with their permit, and after that, they'll be looking into not renewing.
But I mean, were they on an interim permit, or were they on a final permit with, with levels, and what were those levels?
I don't remember.
I don't remember.
I actually don't remember.
They never violated for any, any constituents.
But I'm curious what those levels were. Were they comparable to the final permit levels that they were going to make us adhere to?
We can check on that.
I don't know.
We'll check on that, actually, I'd like to find that.
I'm curious.
I think we talked, some figures were bandied about, because we certainly talked about our limits, but I can't remember them sharing limits with us. You can help me out, Jim?
No, I don't, we didn't talk about it, but StanTech is certainly not their operations staff.
That's true. That was the design engineer.
Not at the meeting, who would have been able to provide that?
Who designed their system?
StanTech was the design engineer, it was over a project.
All right, so it wasn't ACO, okay.
Does any of the public have questions?
Can I say home now, again, so you're?
Yes, you can go home now.
Can I get your meeting on my computer?
On Facebook.
Yes, in fact, if you turn around and smile, you can even see yourself.
Why do you say that again, Jim? Thank you for coming today. I love you, you're my stuff.
Okay. Okay.
And watch, please.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you, Loretta.
Thanks for coming, Loretta.
Nice meeting you.
Go home, go on, go on, you guys.
Nice night.
Thank you. I got a sign, a person, a guy in my car.
Well, be kind. Water Conservation Committee, Directors Rice and Kellogg, and I'm dependent on Anne to keep the minutes. I'm not very good at minutes, it turns out. I try to run the meetings, and I don't, I've got scratches as I go, but that's about it, so. If Anne could report, and if I, anything comes to mind, I'll add something.
Okay, so this is a last minute edition, I don't know. Is it up there?
Yeah, I didn't think it got up there.
No.
Okay, so this is a last minute edition, I don't know if there's any copies available back there for the, okay, there are for the public, but the thrust.
On the director's desk, too.
Thank you.
Oh, we've got one?
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
The thrust of this particular meeting was to get an idea of what kind of plants we were going to use for the demonstration garden, and Kendall Gray from Mendon's Nursery was there, and she explained that her idea was that each planting area would have a different theme, and one was for erosion control, they're all drought tolerant, and other fire resistance, and other butterflies and pollinators, birds and hummingbirds, drought tolerant natives, and drought tolerant shade. And then we talked about the walkways, and she still needed some more precise measurements from Jim Ladrini. Jim and, Jim Passanese weren't able to come, so she's going to contact him, and she ventured, I think it was, she ventured that.
Somebody else, I think it was Ward, actually.
Okay, that Butte College might donate some plants.
Yes.
Okay. And then Ward suggested star jasmine for the open fence, and Chuck suggested some signage that would show usage versus a lawn in each area.
How about star thistle, it's real hardy.
I'm kidding.
So, and Mike talked about the, he's doing the, Mike Spees is doing the irrigation for this project, and he talked about different controllers, and that some could be even water sense, and some could be run by wifi.
Actually, I have a forty-eight station wifi controller from Rainbird, it's pretty simple. I can pull it up on my iPhone right here, my Samsung, and I can start Station 23 and set the time anywhere in the world, and it'll start.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Pretty nifty, and the cost on those kind of things has come down recently.
It'll email you if you, if you have a leak and the flow is excessive for the circuit, it'll shut it off and it'll send you a signal and say, you got a leak, check it.
Wow. And then Jim and I had gone to site B reservoir and picked out a columnar rock for the entrance where we can put a dedication plaque, and I looked into the cost of the plaque, and it was between $5.15 and $6.65. And Bill suggested I check with Paradise Cemetery to see if we could do something cheaper. Also, we talked about involving the public, public participation in this garden, if they would like to donate, because it is going to be dedicated to Doug, or just to help us, because it's a water wise or a demonstration garden. And I said I would check with Kevin about how that process would work, and he assured me, and jump in if you want to, he assured me that we would be able to be, take donations for the garden.
You confused me with that, I thought you were talking about dead plants when you said check with the cemetery.
For a plaque, a bronze plaque, the cost of a plaque. And so we might set up some outreach to the public and do donations to help fund this garden.
I'd like to add something there. Dan spoke up, he was the only public member, and said he, Dan is unique, because he went to grammar school, Doug, and he felt that public participation and donations would be better for the planning, for plants and everything, rather than having to use PID funds. And I talked to somebody else this morning, and she was in favor of donations too. Then I got thinking about it, and Doug was so active in the 4H, that possibly, working through the, I know my grandchildren, several of them were in 4H with Doug, and so there is these kind of things that Doug was associated with, and then all the teaching work he did in the community. So it, I got thinking, well, $120 bills will cover it. And so it may be something we can do easily, but we need to have the boards okay, or maybe do some homework, Kevin, and what, can we, how we can solicit funds for something like this, a memorial, so. I don't, since I've been on the board, people have paid for their own memorial benches, and we did do one memorial bench for one of our directors that passed away, but I'm not aware of anything else happening, so we need to know some, if we're in, within the bylaws and all that.
Right. We are considered a charitable organization, just based on our, how we're set up as a government agency, therefore, we can accept donations, and those donations are tax deductible. When it comes to products, they have to be fair market value, and if you're donating services, those get a little bit hairy, because you have to be in that profession of what you're donating, and you have to prove out what your hourly rate is, of what the fair market value of your services truly would be, so.
Might be able to get some 4H kids to help with planning, I don't know, but I don't know what their fair market value would be, so.
Okay, and then to continue the outreach for conservation, I did check and see that there is still money for turf replacement up to $2,000, and, but no more money for toilet replacement from the state at this time. And then after our preliminary workshop on the budget, it doesn't seem like we're going to have a lot of money to spend on outreach. And so I suggested maybe some one-hour workshops that we could put on the website, and Ward and other members reminded me that maybe PID had done something like that a few years ago, and so I'm going to check with Mickey, or to see if we have tapes or videos of that, or anything on the website now, maybe that I'm not aware of, that we can put small chunks about, you know, conservation sprinklers and such.
Doug had workshops, and one of them was on water, actual tools of using and so forth, and had quite a few landscapers that came and involved, and I'm trying to think the name of the man that's on our water conservation committee, he helped put together the sprinklers and timers and all that information.
Mike Spees?
Yeah, Mike. And, and that was, I think it was a no charge, but we used the room and had information going out that meeting, it wasn't anything other than the meeting notice was put on the webpage, as far as I know.
Okay, so I'm going to be checking on that.
It might be something that we could plan ahead and use the mailer that goes with the bill, but the second one didn't have good attendance.
Okay.
And it was held a few weeks later. I don't even remember what it was about exactly, but Doug is a teacher, that was right up his line to do that.
And so that, that was it? If there are any questions?
Does the audience have any questions? Thank you very much, Anne. Very good job. Next one is a Paradise Lake Recreation, this, we had this morning, and Mark took most of the minutes, and Jim's was here, Passanese, and so I talked to Jim before the meeting started, if he wants to add anything, he's welcome to do so, and so I'll, no, I'm glad to say, Mark.
Okay, we had a, a good meeting this morning at 9:00 AM. We had an in-depth discussion regarding the Paradise Pines campground in RV Park, okay? That park is located on Skyway, and it's within our, let me get this right here, our...
Watershed.
Well, it's within our watershed, but we have a watershed protection overlay district, okay? So that being the case, they have a failed septic system there at that RV park, and we had representatives today, it was great, the county sent at least, was it three or four people, I believe, four people, I believe. One of them was Doug Dance, who used to work for the town of Paradise, but now he's working for county environmental health. The gist of the discussion was, you know, the, the possibility of that RV park, you know, contaminating Magalia reservoir with, you know, surfacing leach aid, basically, up in the leach field, which has failed, okay, the septic system has failed. Well, the long story short here, the short story is that the county has been inspecting out there, and there hasn't, there really hasn't been any significant releases, or might have been one back, I'm not sure how long ago it was, but Doug was saying that there hasn't been anything recently. The owner has submitted plans to the state for a new septic system. Now, those plans have not been approved by the state yet, so right now, I guess we're kind of just waiting, I guess that's the best thing I can say. But the county is on this, they're totally aware of the, of the issue, and so I, I felt a little better about the whole issue after hearing the discussion today, that the county is pretty much on top of that, that issue there at the RV park.
Do we have any liability?
Probably not, it's not our problem.
It's our watershed.
It's our watershed, so it's really, yeah.
We, we discussed what our, what our action plan would be, and he felt very confident that there was no action plan needed on our part at this point to, to protect the surface water.
Yeah, right. And then another discussion focused on homeless encampments, transients, on not necessarily just PID property, but Forest Service property, but within our watershed, which causes problems for us. And code enforcement was, was here, like I said, Butte County Code Enforcement, and the procedure is that they, they call the sheriff first, and then after the sheriff apparently clears out the transients, the occupiers, then they go in and do the cleanup afterwards. And then, of course, Jim has talked about some of our cleanup efforts, you know, in areas that are within our watershed, so.
Do we have other areas immediately adjacent to any of the lakes that there is a homeless problem?
The one. They go down the Skyway, but up Butte Creek towards the lake, we've had camps right on the creek, abandoned jeep right on the creek.
Just Magalia or, or Paradise Lake?
Between, between.
Towards Paradise Lake.
Between the two.
Between the two. But that could be almost anywhere where there's a lot of brush.
Where they can hide, yeah. Right. Interesting, I did not, I was not aware of that.
Yeah. But with the fuel reductions projects, that, that is assisting in some degree, because it opens things up.
They can be seen.
Right. Then we had a, we had a discussion, CDF was present, several members from the local CDF office was here, were here, and we, we were talking about the possibility of prescribed burns in the areas that, where we've already done the shaded fuel projects.
That'll take care of the homeless.
There you go.
Is that what you were talking, no.
Yeah. So, and we got a, I had a couple, several communications, email communications with Dave Derby, who works up at the Stifer office, Stifer Road Office, and they are very interested in participating with PID in potential prescribed burns in the future, because it's, it's a really great segue, I think, for the, now, we are currently working, well, we will be working on a forestry, a forest management plan, that's in our, in our packet here, further down, but, so as part of that forest management plan, the prescribed burns would have to be, you know, part of that plan.
Sure.
So if we, if we decide we can plug it in there, then, then we might be able to move forward in the future, so. Then the committee talked about a location for an informational display cabinet, and we haven't quite found the location yet, I think we're still...
And Reg and I are posting it together on the location. It's a large panel where there'll be information on wildlife and other things, and it'll be up at the park part of the lake. We've talked off and on for a couple of years about this, and somehow it always got pigeonholed, and now it's, it's going to get done, it looks like.
Yep, looks like we're going to find a spot for it. Then we discussed the California Department of Fish and Wildlife Free Fishing Days, that's in our agenda pack as well, and the committee basically fully endorsed the idea and supported the participation of PID in the Free Fishing Day events, and as Jim mentioned, that we'd like to, well, so did you, Bill, that we'd like to continue this as long as the program is active, so, as long as that... So, as long as that program's active, we want to do it, so. And also, we'll have free boating and parking the same days, so, so that'll be, that'd be a real enticement, I think. Then we, we, okay, the committee talked about, and we actually approved, the senior poster project for future advertising materials for Kids Fishing Day. I don't know if you remember that, but we, we just, that came up at one of the meetings. And David Bergman, who's one of our committee members, came up with the idea, great idea, the seniors have a project where they can create posters about Kids Fishing Days, and then we can use it as part of the advertising materials for the Kids Fishing Day. And really, it's not going to cost the district anything other than, you know, the cost to print the posters, basically.
By the way, the seniors are always, the schools are looking for senior projects. If you guys can get creative and come up with other ideas, there are a lot of kids looking for senior projects.
That's me, sorry.
Yeah.
I thought I silenced you.
Yeah, remember item three on the thing?
Yeah. Sorry.
But anyway, just keep that in mind, because if you come up with other creative things, like even making a cabinet, kids have made display cabinets in, in woodshop for a senior project, you know, that kind of thing.
We, we also talked about possibly Community Relations Committee being involved in this.
That's right.
Because it's, it's sort of a gray area. We, as far as the lake's concerned, that would be the committee, I guess, for the lake. But if there's any other projects in the districts that the seniors could do, then it probably should go through Community Relations to, to get support for the board and all that.
Perfect. That's a great idea, Dan. We'll bring it before the committee.
Building a bench for the demonstration garden.
Absolutely, yeah, really, absolutely. That's, they are looking for projects just like that, because something like that's not too big. A display cabinet, a bench, you know, whatever, that's something that a senior can take advantage.
I know the scouts have to have a project, too, when you're getting your, your merit badges, you know, so those kind of things are, are great projects. Then we talked about the North Boat Launch, Boat North?
North Shore.
Boat Lake Ramp, sorry. Got it right. Update, Jim, Passanese basically talked about it, and he met, you met with the engineers last week from Division of Boating and Waterways, and I think we're on the right track, we're still moving forward, but they still, we still need to get them to, I guess, approve the, the new location from Boat Launch 1 to Boat Launch 2. And, but we will be putting on RFP for the design of the Boat Launch facilities, so, that'll be good. Then we discussed the DWR required spillway inspection, that's part of our agenda as well, for the dams, okay? We talked about that, committee. Uh, let's see, oh yes, and one thing that was already done as part of that, the CDF crews cleared some vegetation that was around, around the spillways, and so that's, that's been done. And so, that's one thing that was on the list, apparently, to include it on the list from DWR. Neil is working, is the staff person, you know, responsible, working with the spillway issues, so we'll be, we'll be hearing from Neil, I'm sure, here in the future, so, he's our contact with the DWR, spillway issues. And then lastly, we had some discussions about opening up Magalia Reservoir for future recreation possibilities, so, it was just kind of an open-ended thing. We're going to put it as a future agenda item, so if anybody has some, any ideas on that topic, please, let us know.
I had a thing, because you mentioned homeless, and, and we already have people coming down and fishing in the reservoir with the signs all around saying, "Don't fish," from primarily on the west side of Magalia, for the houses are close, but they also come down on the east side. So, if we've got the reservoir, we can run a trail up the hill, and I said, the con, one of my comments, Bill Taylor, operations fellow for the water treatment plant, just loves to run his motorcycle, and he keeps complaining that we've never had a motorcycle thing. I said, "Well, see, if we put a trail up that side and you could run a motorcycle on it, I think we'd have a score." At any rate, I see nobody seeing the humor in it, so, that's usually the case with my humor.
I do have a question.
Yeah.
Somebody asked this of me the other day, and I didn't have an answer, they said, "If Paradise is the larger water body that we now use as a bypass for drinking water, and we allow boating and fishing in Paradise, how come we can't do it in Magalia Reservoir?" I didn't have an answer. Can somebody answer that for me?
It's been prohibited for any recreational boating, anything.
But why?
It's so small.
But there's a problem with Magalia Reservoir.
So small.
There's, there's a thing called tree stumps. Now, if you walk out there, walk along it, and start looking in the water on a clear day when the sun's right, you will see, just this far underneath the water, up from the dam, there's stumps everywhere. In fact, we talked at one meeting several years ago about, Greg, about doing it, and he said, "Well, you don't take an aluminum boat in there, and, with any power on it, because you're going to run into a stump."
So, so, we're not fishing there because we might lose too many lures?
No, I don't know why we don't have fishing. That's why I'm opening it up to discussion after all these years.
I mean, I didn't have an answer, it was, it was a legit question, and I said, "I can't answer that for you, because I don't know why we wouldn't allow it."
I'm going to make a conjecture, just kind of, and, what my thoughts are is that because of the lower lake level, I think it was a safety concern of foot traffic going down there, that there wasn't those nice paths, there's not a direct access down to the lake.
So, it was an unsafe access?
I think, I think that's what the thought was when they lowered the, the surface of the lake. But, that's just, I, I don't know that's the case.
That's a better answer than I had yesterday.
Yeah.
We don't have much aluminum in it, so we just keep...
Well, yeah, there you go.
So, if you're watching, best answer.
Okay, that's it, that's pretty much it, unless you want to add anything?
Well, no, Jim, do you have anything to add on the Boat Launch? Does anybody want to ask Jim about the Boat Launch? No? Okay. Thank you very much, Mark.
Thank you.
And that takes care of everything except the Finance Committee, probably the most important of the committees on the agenda tonight. So, Cliff is the chairperson, and, and I got to rib you a little bit, where's your printed, uh?
Well, in, in my defense, since our last board meeting, we have not had a Finance Committee meeting on anything, nothing to report. And in fact, I feel bad, because I'm the one that made everybody come up with these reports, because I thought it would speed things along, and I just realized it backfired on me, because I was spending three times as much. Because the whole idea was, and I don't mean this in a bad way, but the whole idea was, put it on so that we can read about it beforehand and ask questions about it, but we're actually going into more detail on it now, so we need to figure out how to not do that, because it's going to chew up all of our...
Yeah, because if it's at 11 o'clock, we have a tendency to go through it fast.
But, so, for the finance, if we have something to report, we will, but we have nothing to report at this time.
Right.
Next.
Kevin, it's your turn.
Okay, a lot of my stuff is covered in, a lot of it's covered, actually, in the agenda tonight. Budget, the budget workshop was held on May 31st, which you all were there. We then had a staff budget workshop, and we went over a lot of the capital needs of what we thought, we prioritized a lot of the capital that we felt was, that we presented to, to the board during that budget workshop, and then, and now I'm kind of putting that in there, I'm cleaning up a lot of, maybe some of the language in there, maybe some of the detail that I felt was maybe not necessary, make it a little more concise, I felt like that was kind of something the board was looking for. We are meeting as, as a staff tomorrow at 10 o'clock to go over that, to see what it looks like numbers-wise, and after that, we'll, we'll schedule something with the board to bring back our, our, our thought. A lot of the capital, though, is still a moving target, so, we're still out there on some of these major projects, kind of not knowing exactly where we're going to be at, based on how things have transpired. So, we'll get into that more as the agenda goes. I think the North Lake Boat Launch, we, we got the property, obviously, but I think the north, we're, that's more of what we've talked about through the, the grant. Processed Water Recycle Project is going to be on the agenda, the mixing studies on the agenda, VRAS Design Project, we're in process with working with our design engineer that you guys approved last board meeting, and I believe that's going fairly smoothly. Spillway Investigations on the agenda, staffing, we promoted three existing employees to new places, but we also, just recently, between my staff report and now, promoted another staff member, who is Laura Capra, has been promoted to the Distribution System Operator that was vacated by Jason Bell. So, she was, got the position this week, Monday, yes.
Wow, congratulations to her.
So, she is going to be currently working in her utility billing, we, the utility billing position now is open, it'll close next Monday, and we'll interview in-house candidates for that, hopefully fill that position quickly, and then whoever we choose for that, they'll have another open position from that point on. So, it's kind of that trickle-up, that we're having that trickle, trickle-up effect, but she was very, very excited for that new position that she's going to have, so. PG&E, we did get a, kind of a timeline, I think, I don't know if everybody was CC'd on that, but they did, they submitted a timeline to FERC about their, about getting rid of the powerhouse, and I felt like it was pretty, it, it looked like it was pretty lean there. I don't know if they're going to meet their timelines, but there was quite a few things that they were going to get it out, and within a year and a half, that they were going to get rid of this powerhouse, I don't think that's going to happen.
I understand that, aren't they, aren't they abandoning like three different powerhouses?
I just got the Desablo one, that, that...
Isn't there one up, but there's a lake up further towards?
Oh, I think, yeah.
What's that little lake up there, if you're going the back way through Magalia, back down to?
That's Desablo, and then they have Philbrook.
Philbrook?
Yeah, yeah.
Philbrook doesn't have a powerhouse.
Philbrook just is a feeder, feeder lake.
It's a feeder lake, yeah.
Yeah.
If you go on the dam several times, and there's no powerhouse, they do have a venturi system underneath letting water out, which was nice to look at, but there's no powerhouse.
Tote Town and Desablo shut down, and Coal Carandons shut down.
Okay.
There's three of them. Yeah, those are, there are two other, and Tote Town's the most recent powerhouse.
Yes, that they're shutting, that's shut down. And then, District Manager Recordments on your agenda tonight, and the IB Employee Contracts on the agenda tonight, so. If you have any other questions, I can answer them at this point, but I think a lot of answers will be, our questions will be answered throughout the agenda packet tonight.
I have a question on the Processed Water Recycle Project, that last sentence, working with them to have our project qualify for a portion of our loan to have principal, principal forgiveness. Could you explain what that is, please?
Sure, so, part of the SRF funding, if you meet, I believe it's the green requirements, that there's actual principal forgiveness associated with that process, and if you reach a certain criteria of borrowing, if I'm right, it's up to $4 million of principal forgiveness. So, we're working with them on that currently, and we also are working with them to have a design application concurrent with our construction application, and when our design application would be approved, then we can submit reimbursement for all design work that's been done from all the way back till present for reimbursement, and have all that monies back in our pockets, and pay for it at the SRF rate 18 months after completion.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, $500,000 of forgiveness on the design portion.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Any other questions?
Ann got the one I was curious about. Processed Water Mixing Study.
Yeah.
What is that exactly talking about? I was reading about, the information came out, I think, on, yeah, the, the email you sent out on, on the...
Yeah, that, that, save those questions until the item, what is it?
Well, it is in the agenda then, also.
Yeah, C.
C.
When we get to C, we will cover all of those questions.
MPDES Permit Renewal.
Correct, yep, yep.
Okay. Spillway Investigation.
Yep, that's going to be on...
That's there, too.
D, okay. Apartment Water Research, okay, good. And then, PG&E, we're going to talk about that in a closed session?
No, there's nothing to report.
There's nothing to report?
No.
You mean, we don't get to pay your fees, more fees tonight, or just?
Uh, this one.
Okay. Centerville, what did we do with PG&E, Desablo, Centerville, is that going to be on here or anyplace else?
He's still going over with this.
There's nothing more to report on that, other than what you've already been, we've discussed in closed session on that item.
Okay, but we, PG&E didn't come back to us, or no, no additional information? Okay. So, now that Cliff is back, we can go on, so. Treasurer's Report.
Okay, yeah, my written reports, cash positions at 2.337, our operational budgets right in line with, our, our operational actuals are right in line with budget, consumption revenue is still lagging behind. I'm actually making tweaks to this as we go forward with the budget, so as I'm seeing things come forward, and how they're flushing out with our new rates, I'm making tweaks to make sure our budget's more in line with our actual consumptions that we're, we're doing. You saw the graphs during that budget workshop of our, our production, and how low our production is. That's a direct effect to, to, to revenue. I mean, it's a great, it's a great thing to have as a supply, but it's a stinky thing when it comes to revenue.
I have a feeling it's going to pick up.
It's going to start picking up real quick.
We've seen, we've seen some pickup, but it has not, we're watching, Jim's watching the production numbers even through these hot times, and it's still not getting to where it was back in the day. I mean, do we crest 10 now? Did we crest 10?
No, we're nine.
Nine.
Or usually like 12.
Yeah, but we just started watering our lawn this week, you know?
I can tell you my water bill's right in line.
I know. We appreciate, we appreciate your service, Cliff. So, let me try to think of anything. Our audits, our audit is scheduled for the week of August 28th, so we'll be ramping up for that. That's about it. If you have any questions, I can answer them.
Who actually does the auditing?
It's Tittle and Co., they're out of Chico, Heidi, Heidi Coppin.
Tim Tittle, okay.
Yep, Tim, Tim's the partner, our, our partner's Heidi, Heidi Coppin.
Okay.
They've been doing our audit for the last three years, I think.
This'll be six.
Six years?
They, they got a three-year contract, and then we extended it for another three, so after this year, this, they'll, we will have to go out for, for bid and change, yep. This'll be their last year.
This will be their last year.
Until, until three years, they can rebid.
Does anybody have any questions about the Treasurer's Report?
No, I'm glad to see, though, that you did note that our, our water sales are probably going to be around 10% less than projected, so I'm glad that you took that into account.
Kevin, I just noticed our, our cash balance seems to be increasing every month.
Because of the increased rate?
Right.
The reserves are climbing?
That's, that was my question, it looks like we're about $300,000 every...
It's popping, it's going to pop, and we'll get some nice raises throughout this next couple of months, and then in August, we have about a $600,000 debt service payment.
Oh, okay.
And you'll sort, you'll see.
Oh, I see, okay.
It'll climb back up.
All right.
We, we estimated, basically, we estimated that we would have reserves of $700,000 for the, for that year, being that we're down 300, what is it, 90?
Right.
So, pretty much right in line of where we thought we would be cash-wise.
Okay.
So, we're up probably from year to year, $300,000.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. I'd like to see it climb a little faster, though, I mean, just from, from a capital standpoint.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else with questions from the board on the Treasurer's Report? Public, do you have any questions on the Treasurer's Report? Boy, you're getting off easy tonight, Kevin. Next is, oh, we need a motion approving.
Yeah, I move that we accept the Treasurer's Report.
Second.
Home papers say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Check register approval, and we can start with Dan, I guess, and down toward me, because I'm not very well-prepared tonight.
I had a couple of questions, but I'm actually going to come in and talk to Kevin, I wanted to today or yesterday, but I've been too busy, but they're just minor things, so.
Ann?
No.
Mark?
I'm okay, I, I did notice that, for Enterprise Record, Chico Enterprise Record, we had a public notice, and it was like, hmm, I don't know.
I tell you what, those, those public notices are expensive, I mean...
And we're required to do that, correct?
There are agencies that are working... There, there are agencies that are working on being, having us be able to do them electronically, you know, or what's the word, digitally, you know, anywhere, put them on the internet somewhere. And it would save thousands of dollars for municipalities, organizations like ours. And we just need to push our legislators is what it is.
Yeah, because I, I think it reads, it has to be the newspaper of public record or something in your area, so, right.
You know how many people look at those?
Exactly, you're right.
Even fewer people than look at their, what comes in your water bill.
Yeah.
About the red alert setting.
Yeah. All right, thank you, I just, I just noticed that. Thank you.
Cliff, any questions?
Yeah, I did have one question and, and I don't know what page it's on. It's on the water treatment report. And there was a piece on there that I mentioned earlier, Jim, about Sierra Chemical getting the bid for aluminum sulfate. Two questions. One, what was the cost? Because it wasn't spelled out there and I didn't see it on the check register. So that's why I thought it was from a previous, you know, from last month's register, but I don't recall seeing it there either.
It's, it'll be, it'll be coming next month.
Next month?
Yeah, they just, they had two chemical purchases. One was, you recently had two chemical purchases. One was that one?
Oliver's and Bleach.
Yeah.
And this one.
One of them was approved a couple of months back.
Okay, I know the bleach was because I saw that. But the aluminum sulfate, what was the amount of that purchase? Did it exceed the amount that requires a bid to be brought?
It would not have, it would, it would not have exceeded it.
Do we know what that amount was?
I can't, I think it was 19, I'm guessing.
1900?
19,000.
19,000. That would exceed the amount, but that would exceed the amount that you'd be able to purchase without bringing it to the board for our approval.
The purchasing policy allows the general manager to purchase over 25,000 for distribution supplies and for water treatment chemicals.
I'm pretty sure that we, when we were looking at the changes on the purchasing agreement early on, quite a few months back, that there was a lot of discussion about that and that every time that those items got purchased, that they had to go out for bid and those bids needed to be brought to the board for our approval.
Not, not, it had to go out to bid, but the bid didn't have to come back to the board for approval if it was in the authority of the purchasing amount for the general manager.
It didn't exceed the threshold.
So, so they have to go out for bid, but the bids don't have to come back to the board.
Okay, I'm going to have to review that then.
Yeah, I can help you.
I could be wrong on the amount.
I think I recall that they're correct.
So it was 25,000 or greater?
Twenty-five for, only for water treatment chemicals and distribution supplies. So we can't go out and buy a $25,000 computer. We can, we can't go out and buy a $5,100 computer.
Okay.
So it's 5,000 for general, 25,000 for those specific items.
Okay, so I need to review that.
And I can help you with that.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Jim.
I have on page 50, I got two that I found there, that's probably a longer one. On vendor DataMatic, $1,315 annual service maintenance and software. What software is that?
That's for, I believe it's for our handheld devices that we go out and reprogram the old DataMatic ones that we still have in the ground, the Fireflies that are still in the ground. A lot of times they'll go haywire and you have to go out and reprogram them.
So they're what we use to check on the automated meters?
Yep, automated meter system, yeah.
And, and annual service, who do we get that from? From DataMatic? I thought they were, didn't they go out of business?
They have a, they have a split off, they had a split off company that they kept out of bankruptcy that kept the Fireflies that were still out there running. They just weren't going to, the thing that put them in bankruptcy was the warranty of the actual devices. But the device, there were still good devices out there that were still running. We still have quite a few of them, so.
Could you talk a little...
Sorry, they, they still have good devices out there that are running, so they kept this subsidiary out of bankruptcy and that subsidiary is keeping those devices going and, and keep them running.
Is that part of the service where it goes to Texas and comes back?
Correct, correct, the reading system.
That's the part I remember, they kept out of bankruptcy. Didn't realize there was handheld devices. Weed control, the next vendor down, Bruce Davy. In all these different jobs, did, I had a customer point out to me that we had a lot of star thistle under our main pipeline coming out of the lake, down from the water treatment plant. So it was star thistle all along. I brought it up in a meeting. I'm just curious, did any of this money go into cleaning up under that 42-inch or 44-inch pipeline? The field crew guys aren't here.
My, my first response is too close to that creek where the water's running.
How close to the creek is it?
I can't, I can't...
I legally sprayed within two feet of the, of a running stream.
Bruce is maybe very, very cautious about that issue of spraying.
He can, he can go to the ag commissioner and get a, a permit to do that. And, and I got the one that was within two feet of the, of a running stream and I'm going, so I don't, so the question is how close is the water stream to the pipeline?
My second, my second response would be it's in the creek and it, he generally just sprays to the plant, within the plant perimeter, fence, within the fences. And he's probably not going down, that's sort of off of our properties in the creek. The way I hear you explain that, it's really kind of not where we're worried about.
Could we, could we actually check it out, Jim? So that we know where it's at and how much it is? And since he's doing weed control, maybe it's possible that way. If you can't spray, then we need to look into doing it some other way.
Yeah, I think it's beyond the scope that we provide Bruce with outside our framework.
Is it access issue for fishermen or something?
No, what I was told is that there's star thistle four to six feet underneath our main line, coming out, going down from the water treatment plant. And he felt it was a big fire hazard that Phil told me. I brought it up in a board meeting and obviously nothing has happened about it. So I, that's why I'm asking if we actually inspect the pipeline and see what we have there. Because that's an area where I don't think anybody goes, walks down there easily and he's a neighbor evidently to us and told me about it.
I think one more comment, we have, I think we normally would have cow fire cut all that out, vegetation removed, but with that type of activity, weed whackers and such.
No, that's fine, I, I don't...
That's something I can easily quickly make happen.
Okay.
I think we'd rather have that than spray the drinking water.
Mm-hmm.
My preference is...
Downstream areas.
Well, we'll look into it, we'll look into it.
I can easily have cow fire.
We'll, we'll look into it and see if it needs cow fire in there.
Star thistle doesn't like water and I don't think it'd kill it actually. That happens in farmers' fields where they actually irrigate in the summer and flood, so they will kill it. That's all the questions I have.
I make a motion, we consider...
Did anybody, were they given the opportunity for input? I don't know.
Yeah, we want a public opinion, I'm sorry. Nobody's been speaking up lately, so.
I make a motion, we consider approval of general fund check numbers 50581 through 50681 for the month of May 2017 totaling $328,302.60. Exclusive avoided check numbers 50623 and 50636. And authorize, authorization of a similar amount allowing or adjusting for extraordinary budget or board-approved items during the month of June 2017.
I'll second that.
Do you want to consider it or do we, never mind.
I'll second that.
Yes, I want to consider it.
Is there any, do we have, we have a first and a second?
Yes, first and second.
Is there any other comments on it? From the board? Yeah, they're not. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Legal report. You're much prettier than Dustin and I'll probably get in trouble for that, right?
Yes, you will.
Yes, you will.
He's forgotten his training already, hasn't he?
I'll take it as a compliment.
It's okay if you said Dustin is prettier.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, there you go.
Yeah, but you have to be honest.
Okay.
It's a quick report. The test claim briefing has been completed. We filed a reply. I believe you have a copy of that?
I'm not sure.
If not, and if you guys are interested, we can provide you with a copy of the reply brief that was filed for the test claim case that's been ongoing for a while.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We're looking to see if there are any small district association, Aqua, other parties that might be interested in filing an amicus brief, a friend of the court brief supporting the district's position. So Dustin's working on that. Nothing new on Desabla, as Kevin mentioned in his report. I know that Dustin had talked to you about some water conservation legislation that's kind of sitting around. I think he mentioned that he talked to you about five bills the last time he was here. Only three of those have made it out of committee. And then there's some budget trailer bill, still kind of sitting around as an option. Nothing new to report on any of those. It just kind of looks like they're being winnowed down and we're going to continue to monitor those as part of our participation in the Aqua Legislative Committee and report back if, if and when anything happens. That's all I have.
Any questions?
Does it seem like any of the resistance to some of those bills is, is being effective?
It's hard to tell what's being effective because it moves so slow. So it's continuing to move slow. I, I don't know what caused the two to not make it out of the committee. Could have been resistance, could have been regrouping to come with something else. I don't, I don't know what caused it.
But don't be looking for anything that's common sense related.
None of these had to do anything with the twin tunnels issue?
No, none of those, I don't know.
Thank you.
You want to say something, Warren?
Thank you, just to dovetail on that, that was part of my commentary at the state convention. Here's the thing, locally, our representative Gallagher, he is following the three bills that are already in assembly quite closely. From an agricultural standpoint where he's, you know, deep seated in that format, he, he is concerned that some of the bills where it's alleged about conservation really isn't. And he is hoping that on the assembly floor, they can get the language clarified so that the things really do deal with conservation are specific and the things that aren't are thrown out. He would appreciate any public's feedback as well.
Good luck on that one.
Thank you very much for the report. Staff and billing reports. So that would be for field operations, is that part of it?
Distribution is on page 61.
Yeah, 61, yeah, okay, on page 61. So I'll give everybody a little bit of chance. We don't have any staff here to question.
Well, seeing the huge, huge reduction in Firefly failures is interesting to see. It's been so high and all of a sudden 17 only? That was great.
That's just replacement, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, it's, it's kind of a, an eye awakener for us also that we're seeing that drop and we're wondering if it's kind of that the bad ones all went at once type thing and we're now seeing...
Yeah, you know, going from 300 down to 17.
And Jim just did a, a test on the battery power, the amperage or whatever it's called, and they did a system-wide test. They actually saw where before we saw this dip down, they actually saw it dip up. So like it's getting stronger.
Maybe it likes hot weather.
And, and it might be that now it's getting more support. So what we're thinking is that by replacing these, we've gathered more support for these ones so that when they throw off that signal, it's caught and they're not having to work so hard to get that signal further down the line.
Oh, it's actually working out, replacing batteries?
It's working out to replace, we didn't replace batteries or replace Firefly, we replaced the whole unit.
So can we be cautiously optimistic that we might not have to replace 5,000 Fireflies?
Cautiously.
Yeah, very. Slower.
And we, we worked with the waste, Northern Cow, whatever our trash company is here, and we were thinking we're going to pay an arm and a leg to get rid of some of these batteries. And I believe our first quote was $7.50 a pound and then went down to $2.50 a pound. And somehow the person over there, I can't remember her name, and Jim worked together to get it to a nickel a pound.
All right.
Oh, that's a huge deduction.
That's a nice negotiation.
Yeah, the 18.
We've taken quite a few, they're separating them out and just getting them out. They're separating out the batteries from the other replacements and they've gotten rid of quite a few. Northern Recycling, but I can't remember.
Yeah, Northern Recycling.
Jennifer?
Doug, Doug Spiker.
Spiker? No, the lady's name's Jennifer.
Yeah.
Jennifer too, yeah.
What is it?
Jennifer Arbutham.
Very good, yeah. Jennifer Arbutham.
Yeah, Jennifer works with her.
I noticed, is this, this covers the lake?
Yep.
Yeah, page 68.
We talked a little bit about the rotary bathroom this morning. And one side of it isn't complete and the other side is, but it's unfortunately didn't have toilet paper in it when I looked at it Monday. But the side for, isn't complete at all is expanded for, come on, help me out, Jim. What are we?
That's changing room.
The staging room and also for disabled, isn't it?
Yes, it's 88, Richard.
It's, yeah, it's supposed to be 88. We've been working on it over a year. Part of the problem has been the man that was doing the working had cancer and was not available, recovering, and he's back to work now. But my point was being that if we're going to use the gazebo and charge people for using the barbecue area and so forth, if they need to have somebody change into a clown outfit or anything like that, so like at kids' fishing days, the guys come dressed as, two of them dressed. So at any rate, I was hoping we'd get that done after a fashion.
Was this part of the new business or is this old business?
No, it's part of the report.
This is the staff report for the lake.
It has pictures in here on page 69.
Yes.
Treatment staff report, can you go over that with us, Jim?
I would speak to you.
It's right in there, yeah.
The area is in yellow from the, I mean, I'd like you to, I'm surprised how many people don't read our consumer conference report. Hey, I'm going to keep putting that in yellow because I'd like you to, it was a special effort of this year, the consumer conference report, to explain as much about where our water comes from, how it's treated, how it gets distributed. It's been more, way more comprehensive than in last consumer conference reports to educate the public on our water quality, our watershed. So, and I've added this year a whole lot more water quality chemicals to the report that the public is concerned about. They're always asking about fluoride even though we have none. And I don't really, I don't have to put chemicals that have non-detex. But there are, there were some, these people, public continues to ask questions about the non-detex and, and so just put it in there. We can, stuff like aluminum. So much more thorough, it talks, you know, kind of gives kudos to some of our operations staff in that report. And then it just gives, all the projects that I list there are just status reports. Try to keep you, they, I tweak it every, every time, the words do change.
They do.
But they, they tweak and they try to give you briefly the status of all those areas.
Well, the MPDES permit, we're going to talk about that later, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so we only, 2.1 million gallons was the average day, so that you talked about talked about a little bit. And.
Four point five.
So everything's, everything's turbidity is low and chlorine treatment? Are any of those worried about?
I think, it's, I would say to the guys. You just want to read these things and ask questions, just like many reports.
Okay.
I entertain any questions you have, having you talk about it, there's so much detail in that report, it's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mind-boggling.
You know, sometimes, Jim, when we, when we publicize a drinking water report with all the test levels, when I review it, I see some of the dates of when those things were tested for, or way back.
Right.
And, to me, the, it's almost kind of meaningless when they're that far back, you know?
There's a reason it's our last detection and, and we're only required in some cases to sample every nine years. So.
Or is it seven, eight days?
I mean, I could remove it, but we haven't, we're not required to test from that date forward. If I removed it, then people wouldn't see it.
Maybe we could, maybe we could reword it that, that it's, you know, within our testing range or whatever, because when, when you look at it, I look at it and I'm like, okay, that's great, that was two years ago, what is it now?
It's basically the same.
But it looks to me like you haven't tested it for two years.
No, that's true, but there is a comment in there why those years, it's basically says the recent year and prior years. It's a very short few words that explain what your concern is about, so if you don't catch it, obviously nobody catches it. But that was the last sample date and that, and the reason why we're not required to do it more often is because those chemical concentrations aren't expected to change.
Right.
And drinking water, state board knows that that's, that's.
They're actually not.
That's the best we have.
Maybe we put something on that report that states why, so that when the layperson reads it, they go, oh, that makes sense because why would they test for this particular chemical when it wouldn't typically be found in this surface water impound?
It's embedded, it's another thing, it's embedded in there that says that the chemical concentrations don't change much.
If we're going to give it to the.
Some might not read that report.
No, I get what you're saying, but if we're going to give it to the public, maybe we want to un-embed it to where the average person can see it and understand it.
Make it more obvious?
Yeah.
Well, different constituents have different sampling cycles.
Sure.
So some things, some are weekly, some are monthly, quarterly, yearly, every three years, every seven years, every ten years. So depending on the constituent, that, that could be, that's the last time it had to be sampled. You could do next due sampling if you wanted to do a column, you know, the next due date would be seven years, like asbestos is, I think, every seven years.
Something just to let people know that it's not, gee, look how far out of date this is, because they don't know that.
It's like Jim said, though, they're not expected, we're not expected to see any of these.
Right, shame.
These, yeah, these chemicals or these constituents in our water. And that's why there's such a long, you know, gap between testing, because they're not expected to be there.
And because the, the source water has a known quality, oftentimes you can get an exemption from the state of waiver so that you don't have to sample.
Yeah, no, I get all that, but the average person doesn't, because I've had that brought up to me before, they haven't tested for that for three years.
Because they're not required to.
Yeah.
Yes, Warren?
Thank you, just to follow up on that, you know, I've followed Cal Water for over twenty years. They do the exact same thing, but they do it in a format that the public understands, almost cartoonish. But you have to dig to find all the details that Jim puts in the regular narrative. It's just two different concepts, but they're saying the same thing. We could do the same thing they do, but we're not copying Cal Water. We're, we're different, and that's, that's okay.
Well, as long as the customer understands and can read and find the information, that's the main thing, that's the goal in that reporting, because that's for the customers to know.
We're going to put it out there for the public to see, then they got to be able to understand it. If they can't understand it, you're just going to confuse them and make them even madder.
Yeah, we have to, we have to listen to Cliff for five to ten minutes. Please, you know, get the report for anybody who wants.
Good comments.
Any more questions?
I move we approve staff and billing reports for May twenty-seventeen.
Okay, I have one, I just ran across.
Oops.
Did Aqua Hawk, on these bar charts here, it is, it looks like it went down on use?
Yeah, it does.
How far down did it go? I can't read the chart.
I don't know, I'll have to ask Mickey on that.
Just one month, though.
She'll be here later tonight, you can ask her.
Okay.
Because people use less water.
Well, yeah, well.
It would have taken off, been off of it.
An awful lot of houses have been sold in this town the last couple of months. Okay, so staff and billing, so do we want to?
I did make a motion, just no second came through yet.
I'll second that motion.
You'll second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Now the important part, we're going to take a five-minute break. Services interim manager Phillips will cover this. Consider award of contract to provide executive recruitment services for district manager position and authorize interim district manager execute an agreement.
Yeah, so per the board's request, we went out for RFP. We sent it out to eleven different firms. We got three proposals back. I sent them out early on before, way before the board meeting, because I feel like this is more of the board's baby than my baby on the recruitment side of this. And so you have the proposals and you have the, I gave you kind of a fee breakdown. All the fees are very, very close, some are, some are, one has complete fixed, others have variable fees inside of those that they're estimating those variable fees. I believe those fees could be high or low.
No cap.
Yeah, no cap on those fees. So if you have any questions, I can answer them at this point.
I'd like to make a motion that we discuss tabling this item for a period of ninety days and bring it back to the board for possible action if we feel, feel that it's still relevant. I'd like to read something here. Currently, Kevin Phillips is serving as the interim district manager. The three quotes that we received to aid in finding a qualified replacement are all pretty close to $25,000. Assuming that we're successful in finding a qualified candidate to replace our current district manager, George Barber, we would most likely be looking at a significantly higher salary than George Barber was being paid in addition to the $25,000. The individual that we would select will need to be indoctrinated into our system and brought up to speed on the issues currently facing our district. The individual to accomplish this would most likely be Kevin Phillips, our current interim district manager. I feel we would save the $25,000 and table this issue for a period of time to evaluate the performance of our current interim district manager and consider putting him, putting him in the position of our permanent district manager. If we do this, we can find a replacement for our CFO and possibly hire an individual at a rate that is lower than what our current district manager was making when he held the position of CFO. Kevin Phillips currently has the qualifications of a district manager, but in addition, he also has qualifications that a new district manager would not have, financial experience background. Because he has this additional knowledge in accounting and finance, he can oversee the work of an assistant financial officer. Why would we want to go outside of our organization and hire a new individual who has no experience in our district when we have what I believe is a qualified individual who is up on our current issues and has demonstrated the ability to run the district? By hiring from within, we set an example to all of the employees of the district that we value their commitment and work ethic. This sends a message that hard work will give them a path for advancement and that we only go out of our district if we don't have a qualified individual within our own troops. So far, I've seen an improvement in the way the district has been running. Our current interim district manager has been doing a very good job of keeping things going. I don't see the need to rush out and add to this workload by finding someone that he now has to train in addition to keeping up with the current workload. If it turns out that Kevin's not up to the job of district manager, then we can go out and use one of the firms who have provided quotes for us to find a qualified manager. That'll open up for discussion.
I have a question on that. I looked at these proposals, I didn't see anything on a timeframe for their proposal, in terms of how long they would hold this proposal to, you know, for.
How long until the proposal expired?
Yeah, yeah, I didn't see anything in.
I think that's pretty much ongoing. I would think if you're a firm that's in that business, you're going to offer that up regardless of when somebody comes to you asking for.
I can double back with them to double check that.
I would be curious.
I have a feeling that they would, they would probably hold that price.
For?
For, for, not, not forever, but I would assume, I mean.
Three months or?
Their, their proposals ran a good six months, it seemed like, on their timelines anyway, so.
Okay.
I would assume that ninety days, I don't think would affect their, their proposal in any, any facet.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to just kind of know that, that's, that would be something.
I can double back with them.
Okay, sure.
Have we had anybody turn in any applications yet? No.
I have one pending. As soon as the district announces that the position is open, there will be a trained man available who has experience with water districts, is presently managing a district, and he's gotten a huge amount of funds raised for projects in that district. I don't want to say anymore about him because I'd rather his applications speak for it, but he's basically waiting until this board to decide. And I think we can raise, without using these search people, if we simply, here's one ad, it's in a district manager, Bethel Island, municipal improvement district, increased salary eighty-eight, five hundred to hundred and five thousand annually. I'm not going to read the rest of it. They want a background degrees and so forth in it. Most of the ag districts up here pay about a hundred thousand dollars a year for their managers, and they've had various backgrounds where they come from. I know one ag teacher is now running a district in Ridge Vale. So I think there's qualified candidates for running it. We have a very experienced staff, none of them seem to be jumping ship, that can advise a new manager on the things that he needs to know from week to week, you know, we have Kevin on the financial part of it. But I think we need to open it up to see who's going to apply for the job and what kind of qualifications they have. And I don't think we need to pay out $25,000 for doing that.
Cliff, I would have one comment to this because this is kind of hits you in the face with a new thought. I might be willing to entertain the possibility of punting on it for a month and thinking about it. Because yes, I think that this is not something we have to decide tonight, but would that offend you? I mean, would that be something that you would, because it's, it's a thought that I hadn't even occurred.
And I'll make it real easy for you.
I'm sorry?
I'll make it easy for you because you don't have an agenda item.
Right.
That would cover the depth of that discussion. You could certainly table this and ask that a different item be placed on the agenda so you could talk about the option that you were mentioning.
Sure. So.
Yeah, we can't even act on your thing.
So you made a motion, but I didn't hear any second?
Well, there wasn't any second, but I think it's just a gender discussion, so.
He can, he can.
That would be the motion.
Yep, to table it and then ask that another item be placed on the next month's agenda.
Okay, I move that we, I move that we table this item.
Mm-hmm.
Do I get a second?
Yes, I would second that.
Okay. So.
All in favor say aye.
Well, are we still discussing it?
Talk about it for a moment.
We're still discussing, right?
Sure, we can.
We can discuss it.
Jumping the gun down.
I have to admit, I, I had the same thought that basically what you just said, but my, you know, my question about how long these proposals were valid for was, was kind of concerning me.
You know, I think, Mark, that the company obviously is going to want to make money bringing a qualified individual to you, whether it's six months from now or a year from now.
Sure.
So I don't think that's ever going to be an issue. They're in the business of doing that.
Okay.
If you don't buy a loaf of bread today, you'll buy it next week.
And then, and then there's one other part of this for me is that, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, that's fine.
Is that, you know, Kevin, you've been doing a good job, I really appreciate what you've been doing, but, you know, it's been, what, two months? So, yeah, a little more time so we can see how things go. That's kind of, that's kind of where I'm at right now, but I like the, I mean, I like the idea.
My, my thought process is real simple. As a company owner, I can't imagine bringing in somebody from outside to fill a position if I feel I have a qualified individual within my organization, because what does that say to everybody there? Says they don't value me very much either, if I get the opportunity, I'm out of here. It doesn't build loyalty. And it, it just, it makes sense if, if you have an organization where, where you need a position filled and you have somebody that you feel is capable of filling that, at least give them the opportunity to show that they can before you go outside. It's just the way you should do it.
I agree with your statement.
Yeah. You can always find somebody else if they don't work out, so.
For me, I came here tonight to vote on a company to go, move forward with this project. And certainly Kevin is welcome to apply and be considered. But I want to move forward.
I think Ward wants to comment on this.
Thank you. All to respect to Director Jacobs, and that program that you're proposing is very common in private industry and adverse absolutely to public entities where it is the people's interest and not yours. It is the people's interest here to have the best possible candidate, and that's probably not somebody promoted from within. And that's why public agencies always go outside. School boards, fire departments, police departments, garbage companies, public entities, they look for an outside person before they hire from within. It's the exact opposite as private industry. What you do in your business is perfect for what you do in your business or similar businesses, but not for public entities. The public has the right to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Ward. I might add that you elected me to represent you because you felt I would make the right decisions. So I am representing you as the public sitting up here. Am I not?
One of five, yep, that's right.
Ann, would you like to make a motion on the, excuse me, Ann, would you like to make a motion on this?
We still have a motion.
We have a motion on the, and a second.
I have a motion to table this.
Yeah, I know, okay, and I tried to get a vote on it, nobody wanted, actually tabling on the whole thing, so we just simply table it and go on.
Or we're discussing it.
We're still in discussion right now.
Okay.
So Dan, did you?
Nothing else to add?
Okay, so.
So vote on the motion.
Are we ready to vote on this then?
No more discussion.
The motion is to table it for a month, is that right?
He didn't say sixty days, I said thirty, I said a month.
He said ninety days.
No, but in, in the remotion, he did not state ninety, he said.
I said I, I said I had no problem.
He said table it, yeah.
So it'll be back on next week's, next month's.
Next month's.
Be back next month.
Yes.
Thank you.
I see no need to rush into this.
Yeah. Everything will stay as it is.
I think we're ready to vote.
Vote, call vote.
No, just voice.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, all in favor of tabling it, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, passed.
Any ayes?
All opposed, no?
Any opposed? Any opposed, you're supposed to ask, but.
Well, it's been so unanimous for so long, okay, I'll join Ann and we'll make it read it too. It passes, okay.
Table till next month. We just shortened our meeting by quite a bit.
It's tabled until, for thirty days. And if anybody wants to put something on the agenda that deals with that, please do, including you, Cliff, because without it on the agenda, we can't do any action.
I will.
Surplus water users agreement for out-of-district account. Pennington, Neil is going to talk about this. Review and consider authorizing an extension to the surplus water users agreement for Joe and Holly Pennington as presented or as amended, action may be taken.
Yeah, the previous board allowed an extension of surplus water agreement, but they had taken action to say that we would not continue to have surplus water users agreements. During the drought, it was really hard to advance the notion that we had surplus water to sell to people and. And these surplus water users agreements were renewed annually for many years. And then we got into the drought and it was hard to, with a straight face, say that we had surplus water. And so at, at, I guess that was in 2016, no, actually in 2015, late 2015, the board said that if people wanted to continue to receive water service from PID and they were under this surplus water user status, they had to do one of two things. Well, they, they had two options. They could either continue to receive water service from PID by annexing to the district or they should develop their own water ser, water source. And then in November of 2016, Mr. Pennington asked for an extension to raise the necessary funds to cover the annexation cost. The board waived a number of the costs, the annexation fee, which was estimated at over a quarter million dollars, and the band mitigation fees, which were estimated to exceed ten thousand dollars. But now their agreement expires at the end of this month and there's no way that there's going to be a completion of the annexation process. Pennington indicated that they're interested in annexing to the district, but we won't be able to complete that kind of paperwork by the end of the month. So at this point, we really need to extend their service beyond the, the end of the month in order to allow annexation to be completed. But I think that unless the district board has a, has a, a different feeling about this, that we need to see to it that they take the necessary steps to initiate the annexation process at this time. If they're asking for an extension to complete annexation, I would, I would encourage us to say that, yes, we'd like you to sign the annexation agreement. We'd like you to pay the deposit, which is a modest amount. I think it's seven hundred and some dollars. So the action requested is that the board approve the surplus water users agreement that's attached and authorize the board president to execute the agreement on behalf of the district.
Okay.
Or provide alternative direction.
So have we received any funds at all from this?
I don't think we have.
And so have they, do you know their intent? Are they, do they intend to proceed with the annexation?
They have indicated that they were still interested in proceeding with the annexation.
And so the, I understand we, we waived all our fees, but what, do you know what the LAFCO fees would be?
I believe that LAFCO fees are estimated at something like eighty-three hundred dollars.
So.
We waived all of our fees with the exception of the cost for legal and staff time. Those still remain. So any fee, any cost the district incurs should be reimbursed to us by the Penningtons.
And what do you estimate our expenses would be?
I, I hesitate to try to estimate what that would be.
Under five thousand dollars?
Costs have been to date in preparing the, the annexation agreement. I don't know if other things will come up in the LAFCO process. Sometimes things can come up that we have to deal with. I'm guessing our, our costs might be somewhere in the order of a thousand to two thousand dollars.
Okay. And then going to page one sixty-eight, in their agreement, it states that they pay for the first thirteen hundred units, fifty-four thirty-one. The next thirteen hundred units, seventeen fifty-five. And then, I'm curious on this sentence, and three dollars and seventy cents for all water used over twenty-six hundred cubic feet.
Per.
Doesn't say per.
Per how much?
Doesn't say per. It just says for all water used.
That's a deal.
Yes. And I'm also curious as to why they aren't paying their, their second thirteen hundred units. They're at one thirty-five, which the citizens of Paradise have to pay one sixty-two per hundred cubic feet. I also looked up their water usage and this says that it states for domestic water for the household unit only. For the last year, they've been averaging eighteen units a month.
They live in an area where there's a dirt road into them or gravel road at best. And on the edge of the district down Round Valley Ranch Road is where Doug lived. And they're just beyond this district boundaries. They're not, well, when we talked about this at length, the whole board, and came up with this, part of it was we were going to help them as much as possible and not making an economic burden on them to be able to come into the district. And that's why a lot of these fees were put aside because the property isn't worth all that much when it comes down to it.
Well, I, I looked up the actual value of this property right now and I think in 2016.
I thought there were a couple of residences on it though, weren't there?
It was assessed at four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It has forty-one acres.
Forty-one acres.
It was purchased for four hundred and ninety-seven thousand in two thousand and seven.
Four hundred and ninety, well, I'm so out of it on real estate values. I have no idea.
Concern too. This original agreement back at, in 2015, they agreed to pay money.
And they never did.
And they never did. And they got another year and then they agreed to pay money and they never did. And now they want another year and they're going to agree to pay the money and they're probably not going to pay it. So how long do we carry this on? Because they haven't shown good faith yet to do anything other than try and figure out how to get another year's worth of water.
Exactly. And that's, that's one of the reasons why some of the language in this draft agreement is different than what it was in the past. And your point about the three seventy, I, I see what you're talking about. That, that's the same language from the previous version. And I believe it should say three seventy per unit.
Yes, I agree.
Three seventy for all water.
I agree.
That doesn't ring true. But the, toward the end of the agreement on page one sixty-nine, toward the bottom of the page, you'll see some new text, the, the underlined text there, which is marked on the left margin with a bar, term of agreement. That actually stipulates that they have to do some things in order to earn this additional extension. At this point, my recommendation to the board is that, you know, the language, the draft language would, would hold them to, yes, you do need to sign this agreement at this point. If you expect to get a further extension, you do need to pay this deposit of seven hundred and whatever the dollar amount is. I don't recall off the top of my head. But it's a, it's a modest amount of money, but we need to be able to, to go forward with the LAFCO annexation process if they are indeed serious about doing that. We don't want to just give you an extension and then another extension.
Well, because you're talking ten thousand dollars versus less than a thousand, okay? So if you want the down, you, you wanted a positive. What'd you say it was, seven hundred and some?
Recall the exact amount, seven hundred dollars and some.
So basically, if they pay that, then they've got another year before they have to come up and ask for another agreement.
Unless we change that now and say.
Well, we.
The deposit will be, and this is granted for a period of one year max.
But we need.
Or something.
But that's my point. For seven hundred dollars, they can get another year's worth of water and then still not pay the ten thousand at the end. And they've done this three times now.
Yeah. Well, they haven't paid anything yet.
Do you mean the LAFCO processing fees? Because we're supposed to pay the LAFCO processing fees plus the deposit.
Whatever fees are required for reimbursing us for our expenses and whatever fees need to be paid to LAFCO. And, and I think that maybe they need to make monthly payments on it and that when they don't make a monthly payment, the water should be shut off. So that at the end of the year, they've got their money paid in and then they continue forward with, with the.
If I can jump in here real quick, there's, there's not a lot of financial, like hardship on our part that them holding this up is creating to us. I mean, if, if we were charging them all the annexation fees and all that other stuff, well, yeah, give us the money, right? But at this point, them paying their, their out of, what, out of district service contract and them running the water, it's more of a procedural type of thing that the board kind of pressed on to them that stated either find your own water source. They kind of made that as their thing. Either find your own water source or, or get in the district type thing. So it's more of a procedural thing than it is a financial burden on us.
Okay.
We want to kind of keep them moving in that direction and keep them going and stop holding all of this up procedurally. But I don't think from our standpoint, it's a huge financial.
Burden.
Burden on us per se. I think once the LAFCO process starts, which we can kind of, kind of push them into that, then, then it's kind of on them to keep it going and to get the engineer stuff and stuff like that. These things don't take, these, you, you can't rush LAFCO processing anyway, so.
But what kind, what kind of verbiage in here puts the teeth in it to push them though?
That they have to sign the annexation agreement and to, and to pay the, the fees.
Why don't we come up with a total of what our expenses would be and have them pay that amount then so that we're not out anything. And then we give them that one year with the agreement that they get annexed in by the end of our term or, or they get.
The difficulty with doing that is it's really difficult to predict what our costs are going to be ahead of incurring those costs.
Yeah.
We could, we could set a, or the board could set a deposit amount and say, we'd like you to pay this much upfront and we'll deduct your costs from that. And then if there's any additional costs, we'll bill you for that.
But we haven't incurred it yet.
Because we don't even know what will roll out of the LAFCO process sometimes.
Well, we know what our costs have been, yeah. We, we know what our costs have been to date though, correct? We can calculate that.
We could certainly calculate that.
So if we calculate what our costs have been to date and we don't have to do anything until they perform, except send them a bill for the water they use and we're still good, right? Does that make sense?
When the whole process starts though, if I remember correctly from hearing something else, then it comes back to us and we do, all of the fees are stated to them, including what it's going to cost us. Isn't that correct?
That's right. Basically, there's language in this paragraph about term of agreement that says, and I'll read it. If second party fails to make payment to first party for any fees or expenses due and billed under the terms of the annexation agreement, this agreement shall terminate thirty days from the date of billing. So basically, we're kind of putting them on a shorter leash.
Yeah, okay.
Send them a bill for LAFCO expenses and they don't pay us the thirty days, they don't get water then. We just shut their meter off, which is going to be, I think, a fairly significant.
Impact, sure.
Keep them moving along because I think that it would be a very awkward thing for them to be without water based on the fact that they have livestock on the premises and whatnot. I don't think that that would work well for them to be without water. I think that that would provide them with some.
It's in a high fire risk place to.
Well, I have no problem with, you know, I'm, I'm encouraged that they want, on the annexation for the forty-one acres. I'm totally with that. I just would like the fees cleaned up in this language. I would like it one sixty-two per hundred and I would like that per unit. And I, I would.
Agree with the rest of it.
Yeah, agree with the rest of it.
Is that the ag rate, Neil? Is that, they're getting the ag rate?
No.
No, that's the residential rate.
Specific only to this agreement. These rates were set, I guess.
Before you were born.
Wow, I want those rates.
I don't know how they were arrived at.
Yeah.
But they, the rates that are in this draft are the same rates that were in the previous version.
And I know from prior board members, members of the board, George indicated that past agreements have required the rates for water service to be ten percent higher in quantity charge than our normal customers and twenty percent higher for monthly services.
Is your customers out of the district then? Yes, I, I get that, okay.
But that's not the case right now?
That's not the case. Yeah, that's not the case.
We, we held, we held the agreement kind of flat just because we knew we were going to get rid of the agreement. We were just trying to get them through this process, to get them through the annexation process to, so that the agreement then would go away.
So you wouldn't, you wouldn't recommend increasing the, the, the dollar thirty-five to one sixty-two? Just you would recommend keeping it as it is for the next year?
I, I have no recommendation. It's up to you guys how you want to present that.
Well, I guess that's my, my next question. What's the benefit to the district for these folks to be annexed or for us to continue, continue providing?
That you're not procedurally having to take and do surplus water user agreements every year to try to get these things. It's just cleaner. They're part of the district. They're, they're in the district. And for them, it's a security standpoint that they actually are guaranteed water service every year.
Right.
Into perpetuity of that property, so.
So, so then I can buy a minimum amount for me and get the surplus agreement at the lower rate for the rest of the water I use?
You have to get.
You could try.
Because I'm thinking I need to do that.
To be out of the district.
Kick you out of the district.
So we could kick you out.
I, I agree with Ann. You know, we need to recoup our costs that we actually have and we need to increase their rate to at least what we're charging everybody else.
What residents pay.
That's reasonable.
Yeah.
Why, why, I mean, they've defaulted on this going on a third time. Why should we give them a better rate than people who pay their bill every month?
So what, what rate do you want?
Just the, the language for the second thirteen hundred units is, should be instead of a dollar thirty-five, a dollar sixty-two.
Okay.
And then at where it says and three seventy, it should be per unit.
Per minute.
After three, the, three seventy.
I like that.
And that's all.
We can make those changes.
Okay, can, do we have a motion on this with changes to be made by staff as instructed? Can somebody make a motion, please?
Go for it, Ann.
I make a motion that we accept the surplus water users agreement with the two changes that we've spoken of.
I'll second that. Thank you, Neil.
Is there any other comments from any board members?
From the public?
Anybody in the audience? No? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I was beginning to wonder, you haven't sat through two other hours at other board meetings over the same issue. Any rate, next thing, what are we doing? NPDS permit, Kevin and Jim.
Okay. I can start this off. Reminder as of, at the May seventeenth board meeting, the board directed us to issue a RFP for professional services. Basically, as I saw, was to kind of represent us in front of the regional board for our NPDS renewal. So Jim went through the efforts to contacting the regional board and basically changing direction. So if you remember, and this was, this was back in the heyday of when we were at, over at the theater, Doug Barber gave his presentation and he, when, when he gave his presentation, he started off his presentation stating that the board made the decision to get rid of the NPDS permit. Therefore, blah, 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 blah. So that was a board decision back in the day that they told the regional board that they were going to get rid of the NPDS permit. So their direction was, well, then we're not going to start a new one. So what Jim had to do was tell them, we're changing directions. Turn the wheel, start, start going down a different road here. And that road is, we want to renew our NPDS permit. So let's look and see what we, what we have to do. So he requested that. We then got correspondence back from the regional board that they were going to put us in their hopper to work on this next coming fiscal year. And then three, on June fourteenth, we received a letter from the regional board stating kind of the facts of the case, is kind of how I like to see it, of what, of what that's going to look at. Jim still hasn't sent out the RFP, which is actually a really good thing because this is kind of our work scope. It'd be really nice for these consultants to kind of see the scope of the work, of what we're trying to do. We had a sit-down meeting yesterday in our boardroom with Doug Barber, who I believe will be the report writer on our NPDS permit. And we walked through some of our thoughts. We were able to kind of be candid, talk back and forth about what his thoughts were, what our thoughts were. We looked at maps about mixing zones, dilutions, how to prove out maybe some of these things that we're trying to prove that the negative, that there's no negative effects associated with what we're doing, about, about this and that. It was very encouraging. We came out of there with a real good understanding of, of what his role is, how he's there to kind of make sure obviously the regs are, are met, but to also help the district, you know, kind of meet those regs. Yeah. I thought he was very encouraged on the direction the district was going with getting a consultant in place to help us with this NPDS permit. And so I think that, if Jim wants to jump in on this, I think that the district is moving in a very good direction when it comes to what we're looking at. If you have any questions or if Jim wants to jump in.
The June fourteenth letter that we just gave you, which I added to the RFP, very, very helpful. But I think what this board has been saying is we can get more lax effluent limits. And it, it, so it's good to see that letter. Very positive letter and moves, and moves that in that direction, which is something we never, never thought we'd ever see that day. But, well, that's, I mean.
And the other thing too is through our discussions and me and Jim and Bill and talking, that we're going to start doing a little bit of forward-thinking ourselves. We're going to start doing some testing of water upstream so that we know not what's, just as in Magalia, but what's coming into Magalia. What was it?
Oh, background.
Background, right.
That's the next one.
Yeah, they actually suggested you move upstream and.
And so we're going to do that now so that.
Well, I'm sorry, it's kind of crazy because he wants us to do background of DCBM theoretically. There's no D.
No, yeah.
There's no DCBM upstream.
Yeah.
But you have to have data.
We're going to prove it.
Go get it.
Right.
So we're going to start that now so that we're not going to wait for our consultant to get on board.
Regional board wants data, you get data.
They like numbers.
So there was, there was a lot of very good discussion between us and the regional board.
I do have two questions, just for you, Jim, and one of them, the first one is in the RFP that you have drafted, and I know maybe you can, are still, we're still going to massage it, I suppose, but we don't specifically ask the consultant to do a mixing study. We're not, we don't, you don't really say specifically, we want a mixing zone, mixing.
I did.
You did? Well, it's not, it doesn't read that way to me.
Let's read it.
Yeah.
First sentence, the first word in that, in that section, I think it says perform.
I'm sorry.
Mixing studies. At least it does now.
Okay.
It says to seek higher discharge limits.
It says, yeah, to seek higher discharge limits, but I, let's see, the way I read it, I just didn't see.
Oh, no, in the project understanding for this part.
It would be in the.
Project understanding.
I mean, I guess what I'm trying to.
No, it's in the scope.
Scope of work.
Out of the project understanding.
Scope of work.
It's there and it says, conduct a anti-degradiation analysis, determine that's.
Higher discharge concentration of DCBM. Determine if the aquatic.
Analysis, okay.
Three.
Three. Evaluate the beneficial use of the water.
Yeah, mixing zone number three.
But are, Jim, are you going to, are you going to provide them all the background data?
The other three.
Your testing.
Change. Technical information such as mixing zone.
I think that's what work is.
Yeah, when I, when I'm, yeah.
Right here. Number three, right here where I'm circling, it says that. Got it.
Yeah, change. I strengthened that.
The mixing zone study is a big deal. I mean, it's expensive, yeah, and, and we really, I just would think we need to be more specific about what we want there.
I'm just.
Well, no, I just, one person talking at a time. It gets a little confusing here.
Sorry, Jim.
But on your mixing zones, number eight on page one seventy-four says, evaluate the existing sampling location of the treatment plant's ponds used to discharge plant. Determine if there are other monitoring locations that would assist with meeting the final effluent limit. So it isn't nailed down to the certain test.
I, correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, but I think what you're saying is we want you to give us the points and then we'll go do the testing. Is that what you're saying? So you're going to do the actual sampling and testing and give them the data and then they're going to put it together and do the analysis so that they can present it to Regional Water so it makes sense?
Yes.
Okay, that's the way I understood it. Okay.
Go outside.
I don't think it's a receiving study. It's just extra sampling to find out if there are mixing zones, if we can create mixing zones.
It would be kind of like if I had a financial statement and I gave it to Kevin and said, would you do?
This is the first step.
An analysis and let me know where I'm at. He didn't spend the money.
Clarifies it for me.
But he's going to tell me if I did it correctly.
It's not really a full mixing study, which that's what I was assuming we were going to do.
This was generated from the letter from Stantec, another one that says.
Robert, we're all involved in the conversation.
Yeah, sorry.
I can.
I was just clarifying that this RFP was generated in response to letters from Stantec and another engineering firm that said, before you actually spend millions in, in the treatment plant, look on paper if you can get exceedance for aluminum and DCBM.
Correct. That is, that is correct. So what we're doing is we're starting at the base. We're looking at if our, if our renewal of our NPDS permit will allow us to do the least amount of capital improvement to meet that requirement. That's, that's where I feel we need to go first. Then if there's upgrades that need to happen, we take that and say, what's the least amount of upgrades that need to happen? And if there's benefits to additional upgrades, we know what the base is, we'll know what the additional benefits cost is, then we can take an idea of what the net difference of that is. Is it worth the additional benefits that we'll receive for that? Yes, no, maybe so, but at least we'll have the numbers and make the analysis on the financial side. But our thought is, what's the base lowest cost we have to do to meet the requirements by the NPDS permit?
But my understanding is that it's very possible, if we can give them the data that they need, that they'll come back with limits that we can meet right now.
That is correct.
Similar to our interim levels without having to do anything.
That is.
Which, having said that, I got to give this gentleman over here to my left a little bit of credit. Because early on, you said that you just need to be strong with those guys and they'll back off. And we didn't really listen to you as much as we should have, but it sounds to me now like what you were saying is kind of where we're going right now with this, is saying no. Here's why you need to give us more liberal limits and.
This works with all government agencies and I in fact worked for a government agency, Soil Conservation now called NRCS. As you understand that they're government employees and they, like just what we've been doing as a board with other business tonight, we've moved things around a little bit, that they, they don't want to punish us, they want to work with us to get the problem solved. And so if you're firm in your ideas, you can go along. And I'm not going to tell you a story about sulfur on the ground years ago, that this played out that way. And much to the advantage of the thing and the manager of that case wanted to go along with what the ag commissioner was demanding. And after we had a conversation, it all went away. So you, that's, I thank you for the credit, but that's the way you deal with government, including the Forest Service. But they're the most difficult people to deal with.
It makes sense. When they came in and spoke, when was it, in the last year they came? Was it that? Okay, maybe it was March. And they, and they got it and they went away, but before they went away, they said, bring us something that we can chew on.
Right.
And, and so now I feel like that's what we're doing. They were asking for something to be able to give us a better answer. You know, saying, give us something that we can work with you on. And so now I think if we do this and we give this to them, they'll do everything they can to make it so that it can happen. And I, and I think we're moving in the right direction.
So Jim, I still, I'm still confused here on this number three because you're saying obtain technical information such as, such as mixing zone and dilution credits. You're not, you're not asking for a dilution study though here. That's, that's, that's where I'm.
I think they're going to, if I understood it correctly.
I'm just going ahead.
Yeah, it's, it's through, through extra, through extra monitoring, you're going to see if mixing, mixing zones are created, if they're, and, and if a dilution credit can be obtained in that way before actually doing a dye study.
Okay, so you're asking for preliminary information. Okay. Okay, that's where I'm, I thought we were going to just ask them to do a dilution study. Not yet. But if, if, do we need to link that to this RFP? In other words, if, if something like that is found and it's possible to do it, then do we ask them to do it? That's my point because we'd have to go out again or get.
Kevin, you let Jim talk. He was trying to get something in there a minute ago and then you, you go, okay.
I can answer.
The regional board's letter says do a mixing study.
Correct.
That last, basically, that last paragraph.
Right.
I know this is written a little vague, but it infers to do a mixing study.
Okay.
Well, that's, that's what I'm trying to get at here is we, are we asking them to do a full mixing zone study? Which, which I think we should. That's what I'm trying to say.
To me, it says that.
Okay.
I, I think, can you just firm it up?
I can.
Okay. So he'll firm that up. We are going to ask for a mixing zone study. I, I don't, I don't see us not asking for one.
Okay.
We'll firm it up and we'll make sure that it's, it's part of the scope of work.
It's going to be clear because I wasn't clear on it and that's all.
We'll just, we'll put it in there as a scope of work will be a mixing zone.
Because it's a big, it's a big part of this. It's going to be a huge, a big cost of this and so we don't want to have to do it again. In other words, what I'm trying to say, we'd have to go out again and ask somebody else to do it.
It's going to happen with the firm that we choose.
Okay.
So just firm that up.
Okay. Perfect.
What action do, what action do you need?
Yeah, I was a little fuzzy on that. It kind of says it wants us to have action to discuss it. We did.
That's, I have action in mind.
No action.
Well, just concurrence. Concurrence is all they need.
Action may be taken. What action do you want us to take tonight?
Just, just concurrence is all they need from your suggestions.
Just review and, just review and comment.
But we have the letter, we have the letter now from Regional Water, so are we primed and ready to shoot this out?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Okay, so then you need action approving you to be able to do that.
Technically, no, because there's, we, we've sent out RFPs all the time without board action. It's what comes back from the RFP requires board action. If you guys want to approve the RFP, more power to you, but we have our direction and you don't need to approve our, that. We have our direction. We're sending it out. It's going to, when's the due date?
July twenty-sixth.
July twenty-sixth, they're back. He's planning on having a committee interview, the, the people that submit back or the selection, having a selection committee almost. And then, then we are hoping to get them, whoever we select or whoever the selection committee, for approval on August.
Working in August.
We're helping them to have a contract by September. The regional board's going to start our new NPDS permit by September. They said there could be a possibility that in nine months, they could have a new NPDS permit.
Should we change this to information only, no action needs to be taken?
I wrote review and comment underneath my.
Action may be taken, may, may not show.
We applaud your continuing to move forward.
All right.
Yay.
I've got one more comment. I'm sorry, this will be the last one, but just for Jim again. Jim, you know, this, you're going to have to do an RWD on this for, for the new permit, okay? Report of waste discharge, R O W D. That's a big deal. That's a lot of work.
Yeah.
Okay, you're anticipating to do that work yourself without asking this firm to help us with that?
I'm asking them to do that.
It doesn't, it doesn't read that way to me.
You've got a draft that I didn't.
Yeah.
My draft includes that.
Okay, so report of waste discharge.
I've been working, I've been, almost every week I have.
So that's in there?
But you've got this. I sent this to you a long time ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
I keep polishing my grammar, my sentence, all that.
I just want to make sure if, if it wasn't, if, if it wasn't in here, then we were going to do that work. It's a lot of work. That's all.
Well, I did, I just say assist because we did it last time.
Right. Okay.
Ourselves internally, but it does say assist the district.
Do, if you've made a lot of changes to what we're looking at right now, do we need to see your actual changes before we?
I would say no.
No.
Now we're good?
We'd like to.
All I would say was put more of that assistance in there so you don't.
It's basically, it says the same thing. It's just, I'm keeping.
Because I hear Mark saying too, he knows a little bit about the discharge stuff.
I've been through it like five times, so.
I don't want us to go out and then have it come back to board and say, well, you guys didn't ask for that and now shame on you, you know? So let's make sure we do it right the first time.
Well, I just, I just meant the amount of work and if, if you want more assistance from the, from the consultant, you know.
Actually, it's a current.
Okay. Fantastic.
Can you share the current RSP with Jim and Cliff and probably Ann?
Probably the U three that would understand.
That have some knowledge and understand what you're talking about.
Yes, we will.
For final thoughts. It's a good idea.
Let me suggest this. When I send it out tomorrow, email, I will include your, I think your emails are already on the list. You'll get it electronically tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
And it's, and it's an RFQ because we're really, we really want to see what the qualifications of each one of the, the companies have. And then we're selecting ones that have had success with the regional board in our area on the constituents that we're talking about.
So if they reply to all, we'll get their responses too?
Probably not.
No, we, they won't get the responses.
All right.
Let's go to Dee now, if we can.
We can.
We can?
We can.
We can. Good. Glad we can.
Okay.
Department of Water Resources Spillway Condition Assessment. Okay, Kevin and our counsel will take over on this one.
Yeah, okay. So just a reminder, on May twelfth, we received a letter from the Department of Water Resources Division of Safety of Dams. The letter was talking about some reconnaissance investigation that they had. It was for both spillways, not just Magalia, not just Paradise, talking about an extensive evaluation of the structure of the spillway. And they gave us a timeline to submit a work plan by July fifteenth, which gave us a lot of heartburn and that they want all of, everything fixed by the next flood season. So I was on the phone a lot with the Department of Safety of Dam, or Division of Safety of Dams. We have sent many, I sent many emails over and talking to many of the engineers over there about what the, what are they looking for? What they're looking for is a laundry list of tests. So it is extensive. So that kind of get, again, kind of gave me heartburn, what we're going to do. Neil's been working with our current dam engineer, inspector, engineer that, that we have currently on retainer for doing our dam safety stuff and trying to get an idea of what it would cost for them to do the work plan, to get the, the process going. But through this, I, I asked for an extension of three months. They came back to me and gave us an extension until September first, which I don't think was three months. I was asking for three months from July fifteenth. But September first gave us a little breathing room. It's funny too that I actually read an article from, in San Luis Obispo that the, one of their reservoirs asked for an extension and they got their extension to September first too. So it was, I don't think they put a lot of effort into giving us this extension.
Their form letter said September first, so you get the same one wherever it gets.
And then Emily helped me with a letter to the, to Sharon Tapia, who is a chief over there. She actually was the one on this letter that she didn't, she, her name was on the bottom, she didn't sign it, asking for financial help and for maybe a little bit more information on what, what's going on here. She did get back to me and she was very helpful in some aspects of trying to explain to me what, what's happening. It's, it's a push from the governor's office down to them to enforce. They're, they're willing to work with us in a phased approach. We have a sit-down with them on July sixth at their office to go over the phased approach and all of what they're asking for us to do. And the other thing too is that she did warn us that there is more, more coming down the pipe. There's going to be more letters coming down the pipe for studies and for, I wrote it down. She said a, I don't know if we have one, a emergency action plan. And if we don't have one, we're going to be required to, to do one. So at this point, that's where we're at. I'm going to let Neil come up and speak about his conversations with Gentera and where the board would like to go with this, with getting a engineering firm on board to help us go through this process.
Isn't it something when we want something out of? Isn't it something, when we want something out of our government, they take forever, but when they want something from us, they want it yesterday, yeah? It's amazing.
Absolutely right.
Yeah.
Yes, as Kevin alluded earlier, we've been working with Gentera consultants. They're our, our kind of ongoing dam consultants. They're a geotechnical firm and they're very knowledgeable in dams. They have a great deal of experience in working with dams that are under the review of DSOD. We already have a contract with them. The contract has a, a kind of a placeholder, scope item for other items as needed on an ongoing basis. So we could head fairly quickly with, with giving them the go ahead to, to get this work done. They've developed some budgetary numbers for us and they have a proposal for us, but the proposal is in the draft form. And, you know, pending what the board decides, whether you wanna go out with a request for proposals from other companies or whether you are willing to work with Gentera, Gentera on a sole source basis. They're gonna hold back the final proposal until, whether they're gonna be one proposal of many or whether the proposal is gonna be with the intent of being a sole source. But they have given us some, some budgetary numbers that we used in the preparation of the grant application that we've just completed. Or trying to get some help with funding this work that we're being required to do. So I can, I can share those numbers with you. And again, this, these are very preliminary budgetary numbers, but we put in our grant application for Paradise Dam, the estimated project cost for these evaluation efforts would be $102,000, $102,300 actually. And then for Megalia Dam, which is probably gonna be a substantial amount more work and could be more costly to remedy as well, we have a budgetary cost estimate of $261,800. So between two of those, this could be a fairly expensive thing. We're hoping that the grant will come through and that we can get some help with that. But just so you have a sense for what cut, kind of numbers we could be talking about here to go through this evaluation phase. That's the kind of number we're looking at. I wanna kinda back up a little bit and identify that those costs include more than what's in this letter that we received from DSOD. The SOD is asking for spillway evaluations. But the district had already been looking at doing some additional evaluations that Gentera had given us some proposals for in the past. And then when, when things were getting a bit uncertain as to what direction we're, those were put on hold. So the new board could get a chance to deliberate on those rather than going forward with, with things that, that could be happening right in a transition. So for your information, what we had been looking at was doing an inspection of the outlet works. Now, what the outlet works are is different from the spillway. The spillway is basically a structure that when the water level gets to a certain point, the water goes out. At whatever rate it needs to, to hold the level in the reservoir down. The outlet works are basically different mechanism that allows us to release water at a rate that we want to. So like at Paradise Lake, when it's summertime, we need 10 million gallons per day going into the treatment plant. We open the valve at Paradise Lake and release 10 million gallons of water every day down the creek to get to the treatment plant. Megalia has an outlet works as well and that outlet works is basically kinda direct connected to the treatment plant. But each one of those dams has its outlet works and those have not really received an underwater investigation for many years. And so there are some concerns with, with what might be going on in Paradise with the outlet valve. And so we had planned to do some underwater work and interact with our, our geotechnical consultant to kind of direct that work and to prepare a report on the results that came out of that study. So that was one piece of work that we had been anticipating doing. Another one was investigating the outlet pipeline support cradle straps at Megalia. So we have this outlet work, so you can see that concrete tower when you drive across Megalia Dam. That outlet tower is connected to a pipeline that runs through the dam. And that pipeline has straps that hold that pipe down to concrete cradles. And those straps are anchored with bolts that are of questionable anchorage into that concrete. So that's something that DSOD has expressed concern about in the past. And we were looking at going forward with an investigation to try to identify, were those bolts problematic to holding that pipeline down in the event of an earthquake? And so we had money that we had been looking at spending to investigate that and, and determine whether those straps needed to be upgraded in some way.
Were some of these in the budget? When we talked about the budget last month, were these items that you had in there or is this additional?
I remember a cavitating valve at Megalia. Is that that valve you're talking about?
Yeah, when we did the workshop, these were some of the things that we were kind of anticipating. We kinda focused, I think, more on the spillway issue. And at that point, we didn't really have a very clear idea yet even what those numbers.
So these dollars, the ones that would have been not for this additional that they need, but the other items you're talking about now, they were not actually in our budget for 2017, 2018? Or they were?
But 2017, 2018, that.
No, so, so this is, those, those items were, those items, what he's talking about is kind of stretching out a little bit away from, from the spillway evaluation. So what he was saying is that these items have been brought up in the past and they kind of have been foregone. You know, kinda pushed away down the road a little bit, that there've been, there've been issues that have been brought up as we've been surveilling, but they've been kind of just knocked away.
Right, but when we spoke about the budget last month and Neil had his input on the estimate for the items, for the improvements, the capital expense improvements, these were not part of that? Or they were?
Not really. These are not really capital projects. These are kind of more maintenance projects.
Okay, so.
And what he's trying to say, I think, is that if we have Gentera on site doing this large project, it'd probably be most efficient to have them do this other thing at that same time.
Oh yeah, no, I get that, but we're talking almost a half a million dollars more in expense that we weren't anticipating.
Correct.
Not, not just a hundred thousand.
Yeah, this is all, this is all new. This is all new, non-anticipated until whatever date that letter stated.
And I didn't interrupt you. Go ahead. I wanna hear what you finish what you have to say.
That's a good question. I just, I just wanna make clear to the board that when I'm talking about this number that's, you know, $360,000, that it's not all in response to the DSOD letter that we received a month ago. Much of it is, but there are some other items that we had already been planning on working with Gentera to address on some other, you know, kind of facility concerns that we had there and looking at investigating those. And so if Gentera's gonna be working on the site and they're gonna be investigating, you know, they're gonna be going through records to identify what needs to be done, some of those tasks are gonna overlap. And it would be anticipated that we would save some money if those tasks are combined into the same timeframe and we, we have them deal with all of this stuff as opposed to piecemealing it out. Now, if the board doesn't agree with that approach, we certainly can back away from that because what we really need to address right now, under state mandate, is this issue.
If, if we lump this all together, is there a chance that if we get some funding to help us because of what the state wants, that they would include our total cost here or would they separate it out and say, we're only gonna help you with this part?
We ask for this entire package.
Okay.
Whether they would fund all of that is gonna be their call probably. And I don't know whether they would look at, well, can we, can we whittle this down? Can we say, well, no, the spillway is only this part. We'd like that to be the only part we fund? It could be.
And we know we have some deficits there, right? So they're gonna come back and find what we already know is defective and that's the reason we had to lower the.
I think that's a good point and, and it's, at least from our perspective, something to keep in mind that even though the state is saying you need to do these evaluations, it's prudent to make sure that you're not doing evaluations that you've already done just because of this new letter, right?
Right.
Which I think gets to your point in coordinating this into a larger evaluation that has been kind of pending and on hold for a while. But it also makes sense to me that you hold off till after your meeting on July 6th.
And not do anything rash.
To get, to get them to, to really pinpoint, cause that letter doesn't tell you much of anything as far as what's gonna satisfy them.
There's a two-pronged approach to that too, though, is that I don't think, you know, we're not gonna rush to do anything until we sit down with them. But we also were thinking that we might want somebody on board that is specialist in that to be kind of our ears, eyes and ears too when we're sitting down with them. So, so I don't know if Gentera would be willing to kind of do that on a hourly basis to maybe be our eyes and ears at that point without maybe fully contracting with them to do a full-blown investigation. Cause we don't know what that really means. We don't know what a phased approach means. Does it mean that we just tell them, we're gonna work as hard as we can to get there and three years later down the road, we're gonna do it? We don't know what that phased approach truly is. So we really don't know what our required scope of work is, is going to be.
And that's gonna be my next question. We already know what some of the defects are, especially with Megalia. And they're gonna be emphasized. They're gonna bring that out. And then the state is going to, are they gonna ask us to correct that?
I think that has to be part of the conversation from the very beginning, right? That look, we can, we can go up there and we can talk about what's wrong, but then we gotta talk about who's gonna pay to fix it.
Right, because we already know that, about the fault zone and, and the fact that we had, it's earth and then we had to lower the water level. We know that. And they're gonna come back and emphasize that and we're gonna say, yeah, duh, tell us something we don't know. But now the state is gonna say, well, now that we're privy to it, we knew about it, but we weren't looking. But now that it's of document, now we want you to fix it or quit using that. Rein it. Now what do we do?
Well, I suspect that our interaction with DSOD is gonna be a negotiation. Now, there's gonna be a certain amount that we're gonna consider non-negotiable. But I think that we do have, there's, there's gonna be more than one option on the table. And then this board is gonna have to decide if we're offered more than one option.
I mean, maybe there's some money there. Maybe we could get our road in like the one and get the, the dam filled back up.
And here's the huge option that we haven't talked about yet, the government. What needs to be done now is one of us, and I'd just be happy to be that person, happy to call Jim Nielsen, happy to call Gallagher and let's get them on board yesterday and tell them, we've gotten these letters. The state made a mistake. They screwed up and all of a sudden they're gonna penalize all of us. Ain't gonna happen. We're gonna have to step back and we're not saying no, but we're saying way to shake because we're not the only municipality I am sure that this is happening with in the state. And so it's gonna have to go to some kind of legislative whatever. Every, everybody's politician in all these areas is probably gonna be saying, going to the state now saying, way to shake, guys. If you want all these improvements, we can't, the, the state's gonna have to cough up a few hundred million dollars or whatever to assist people. And so we need to go along with everybody, but not, not commit to spending a dime yet.
Okay, this is interesting. Gallagher has a meeting on just this Friday in Huber City.
I just read that in the paper.
Yeah, and, and.
So we need to be in touch with them.
And there's a big, I've got an article, it's about 15 pages. I, I get this B C Water News all the time. And this thing goes into detail about how the whole infrastructure is gonna fail. If even, if they have to release enough water to where they destroy any portion of the levee, it's doomed.
It's gone, yeah.
And they got major problems that they will never be.
Seeing pictures of it.
It will destroy the delta and they'll never be able to recover from it. So maybe when all this hysteria is out there, maybe we can peacock on that and get in there with.
Right.
Starting with Gallagher and whatever, and maybe we can parlay that into them giving us some monies to take care. I mean, maybe we tell them, yeah, you know, we got a dam that's gonna fail. You, you've already said that yourself. So, you know, we need to fix it. We don't want it to fail like Orville.
Again, if there's a time ever, this is the time right now to politically take, take this bull by the horns, run with that. So.
I, I agree on the politics side of it, and since they're both Republicans and Dan is active there, that he would be a good spokesman for us and work with Kevin.
I'd be, I'd be just tickled to go talk to them immediately, be in touch with them.
And so forth that need to go out.
So you're going to the meeting on Friday?
I wasn't planning it, but I can sure pick up the phone.
So.
And it could be a.
Since he has the contacts already and worked with Kevin, it's important to consider the political side of it because if there's gonna be any money, it's gonna have to go through the legislature.
That's it.
Unless the governor has a slush one somewhere, but I don't think he has one big enough.
Also, there's several things to.
Even, even with something small like the senior center a few, a few years ago, we had a conflict with the state. We called a couple of legislators. They made a couple of calls. The whole thing stopped. Now, this isn't gonna stop this time, but the whole thing just went, put the brakes on instantly because we made a few phone calls to our legislators. But let's join the action from many other agencies that are gonna say, whoa babe, slow down.
Maybe to move this along, Neil, maybe we can.
Oh sure, keep it going.
This firm, this firm that you're working with, Kevin's saying, will they work on an hourly basis? Maybe we can do it a little bit better. Maybe we can say that if we end up doing any of this, we will use you, but we need to find out how much we have to do and you need to represent us to find that out.
Okay, there's another people you're not thinking about.
Aqua, yeah.
Here's a, there's a people that actually, see, the front page of this is legislation to fund DAC saves drinking water moves to assembly. They keep you informed about the issues in the assembly. So this is the people that actually lobby for us besides our attorney and the state. So you, you consider this association too, to contact them and see what's going on with the association over this issue. If they're, you know, these things are probably written up two weeks or three weeks before their public.
No, that's great, but to get back to what we have to deal with tonight, what we have to approve for action here, can we direct Neil to go back to this firm and give them a commitment that the board will agree to go with them and their estimate here, depending on how much work we have to do. But for that, then, to represent us so that we can determine how much work we need to do.
Both Emily and Kevin are shaking their heads over there, so.
I'm just looking at your agenda item and I'm not sure that that's covering the kind of direction you're contemplating.
Stretch it that far. Read your, read the agenda.
I got one question, Neil. Since we're, it seems like this work kinda may be expanding a little bit. Like you said, we're going back and maybe having them look at other things that kind of been put off, postponed. What about the, the fault zone study that, you know, that was done in 2010 or whatever it was?
It's never accepted by the Dam Safety.
It was rejected by Dam Safety, apparently.
Well, that's the rumor. I don't know.
Would that be something that they could do for us to, to do another fault zone study? You know, wrap that in there too, because that has a bearing on what's going on here, I think, you know?
Well, I'm sure they'd be happy to do it. I don't know that I would necessarily consider it timely.
Yeah. You know, Emily?
I just thought that it seems like it's kind of the, you know, since it's related.
What you're saying here, yes, I see what you're saying here on this action item, but the supportive documents drilled down don't say that. They're more.
Cliff. Okay. Let Mark and Neil finish their conversation. You butt it right in. Okay?
All right.
Okay, I just, it was just a question about, you know, would this be a time, an opportune time maybe to wrap that in as well? Kind of like unfinished business as well.
I think it would be opportune to do that ahead of any major capital project decision about Megalia Dam.
Okay.
But I don't think we're yet to that point, so I don't know that I would consider it timely at this juncture. I mean, if you, as the board, were to direct them to do that, they'd be delighted to do it. And I'd say that they would be capable and competent to do that. But it would not be an inexpensive thing and I'm not sure that its timing is correct for right now. So you probably wouldn't wanna, I'm thinking you maybe wouldn't wanna roll that in at this point in time because if it didn't end up going forward to some major capital project in that area, then how would that benefit the district?
Yeah, you wasted the money.
Okay.
Just another report on our shelf.
Sure.
I have two things. One, just to be clear, the preliminary estimates you gave us include the assessment and the outworks.
Yes.
Okay. And then number two, what you want from us, you're recommending to use sole source, to use Gentera because of our past history with them and we have a contract with them?
Right. You know, really, I think that what we're going into here, we know that we have to do something, but we're not exactly sure what it's gonna look like. To me, this seems like a situation where you wanna use qualifications over trying to identify, well, can we do this for a little less money? Well, you don't even know what it is you're doing. So you really wanna pick somebody who's qualified to do the work and to represent the district. And it's my belief that Gentera will do the work that we need done and no more.
Okay.
They understand our circumstances and they, they realize that we don't have the money to just throw at things. I've, you know, had communications from Joe Cool. I've, you know, had communications from Joe Kulikowski, who's the president of the company, and he said, you know, "We will try to keep this as low cost as possible, but the scope of work is not well-defined, and they won't know the scope of work until they complete the work plan, which is like the first phase. They have to get this work plan that the state will approve, and only then can they actually dig in, literally, to the spillways and identify what's the condition of the concrete, what's the condition of the underlying rock or material." So, it's hard for them to put final... This is the absolute... What this is going to look like.
Right.
It's going to be a kind of a stepwise thing, and then if we have a conversation with DSOD about this phased approach, they're going to have thoughts about this, too. They're going to say, "Yeah, we accept a sampling plan, which identifies taking 12 samples out of this spillway. That's a number I picked out in Eric. Don't hold anybody to that." But they're going to look at that number and say, "Do we like that number? No, we think there should be 16 samples," something like that. It's going to be a negotiation all the way along. But that's when you want to have a well-comp... A very competent firm working for you, because if DSOD doesn't feel like this firm that you have working for you is competent, they're probably going to have less confidence in them, and they're going to be more inclined to push them to do things, as opposed to accepting their direction and their expertise.
You know, I said too, but I just thought of one more. Who did you apply for a grant? Who did you apply for that?
Who did we use?
Say again.
Who did we use?
Yeah.
It was Cooper...
No, I mean, who... Who did you... Where are you going to get the money from?
Oh, yes. Callie, yes.
Oh, okay. Great. Thank you.
Okay, my turn.
Can I answer your question, Ann?
You did. Thank you.
Wait, just be patient. You're a little short on patience when you get going, so...
Well, I'm a little confused here, because we got a... To the Board of Directors from Kevin Phillips, which describes a whole different plan of action than what Item D on new business is. And I... That was my complaint to begin with, and I see Emily nodding her head. "I don't get what you want us to do. The letter is clear what you want us to do, and I'm in agreement. But when I try to get there, Emily says, 'The action item doesn't give you the authority.' That's because it's not written correctly." That's where I'm coming from.
Okay. I'll give you a little background of what we were thinking. We were looking for direction from the board to not... We were looking for you guys to either say, "Go out for an RFP," or sole source, or go out for a sole source contract.
Right, but it doesn't say that.
Okay, but that's just direction. We're just looking for direction.
I think there's a way around this where you can keep the ball moving and not approve something with Gentera.
Right.
So, if you just tell the...
And we were going to bring back that contract to you guys later on in that time.
Because I see that... I see us about to repeat the same mistake we keep making, and that is dragging our damn feet until it's too late. And I see that the state has said, "We gave you an extension, now perform."
Okay.
And we have a way to perform, and I'm saying, "Let's get it done."
Would you... And this is direction that I'm looking for, is that you direct me to go back to Gentera and ask for a hourly rate to represent us in front of the safety of dams during our sit-down for the phased approach.
How about we modify that to one thing, that you waive those expenses if we select you to do the work?
Hmm.
Yeah.
Okay, I can ask...
They get paid...
What if they say no?
How about reverse it? How about reverse it? We give you direction to sole source for... To go out and get a sole source for this, and that they will include a sit-down with DSOD.
Well, that's what I said earlier, but nobody will agree to that.
And it's got to be within my authority, $5,000.
Okay.
Okay. Therefore, then, we actually get a true idea of what the scope is going to be with our phased approach. So, the phased approach is new since this letter's been written. So, this is an evolution of this thing of what we've done. So, we're kind of ebbing and flowing with what information we're getting back from the state. So, we were thinking, "Hey, we've got to get a work plan out. Now, we've got September 1st, and then we get a letter, or we get a phone call back from the Sharon Tapia. She says, "Oh, we're here to work with you guys. Let's have a sit-down. Let's get a phased approach." So, then, we're kind of putting the brakes on, "Well, let's not do a full work plan yet, because who knows what that work plan's going to be?" So, now, we know, maybe we don't want to rush that through. We want to get clarification of what that phased approach is going to be before we rush into something that we're... So, we know what that timeline is.
Keep it fluid.
But we also want representation. We don't want to go in as ourselves and just get, you know, hosed.
If what Neil is saying is correct, and I'm sure he knows, and he knows the issues that are questionable, they're going to come out, and they're going to make us do something about that.
But what if the... But what if the issue is, "Hey, our dam is terrible, and it stinks, and our spillway stinks too. Why go out there and hammer on it when we know it's terrible anyway? So, why hire somebody to go out there and hammer on it if we're just going, 'Our bad? We've got to...' Why even go out and test it?"
Well, and correct. And that's what I said earlier. We already know what the defects are, and they're going to come out. But then, if they ask us to do something about it...
But that's where we wait.
Then we proceed at that juncture.
Yeah. So, I think we sit on this. We get our representation in there, and we sit on it until we have the sit-down, so we can really get the full scope of what we're looking at. And then, if we have negotiations, if we play... We throw our cards on the table and say, "Look, yeah, our bad, you know? What's the purpose of going out and studying something that we know is already garbage? You know, if that's the way we do it, then that's the phased approach." Or if they say, "Well, no, we want you to... You are required to go out and do this," then that's the phased approach. So, I think it's something that maybe we wait on till that time period. But we also have representation in there that knows what that looks like under a scope of work.
Yeah, their approach for Paradise Lake may be completely different than Magalia.
Right.
Correct, absolutely.
So, we just... Our only action is keep going the way you're going.
So, we're going to go with Gentera. We're going to ask for a sole source to go within my authority to represent us in this time period. Once we get through that, then we will bring back to the board what they... If we're going to get full scope of work.
And there's always the option, we can have a special board meeting at critical on time.
How did Gentera become our consultant?
RFP.
An RFP, okay. So, we already went through that process. Okay, good. Thank you.
It sounds like there's a placeholder for them to serve in this kind of capacity that you're talking about, to get you through until they have enough information to bring you an action plan that you can then evaluate and take action on.
And if necessary, we'll do a special meeting for that. And now, about Dan working with Kevin, it's not on the agenda, if anything, so...
It's just...
We can't, as a board, we really can't do any action over it, but we've talked about it and see what will happen.
Correct.
Yeah, we're good.
Okay.
Now, do you want a motion to that effect, or are we just concurring?
We're done.
We are concurring. Got it.
We're good.
Thank you, Neil.
Yeah.
Thank you, Neil.
Thank you, Neil.
I think that we can be glad that this... That the dam is not in the town limits, that it's county, that it's state, that it's, you know, all of them. I'm serious. It's charge advantage.
It's rated as one of the worst dams in the state, so... Forest management plan.
Okay.
That's Kevin's.
Yeah. This is an MOU between us, Butte Fire Safe Council, and Butte RCD. I guess it's not Butte... Is it Butte Fire Safe Council, or is it just Fire Safe Council?
Butte County.
Butte County, Fire Safe Council, okay. So, Butte County Fire Safe Council was successful in getting a grant to do fuel break... Shaded fuel reduction, and also a forest management plan that incorporates all of our... Or not all, but quite a bit of our watershed. The forest management plan will basically take all of that land and do a plan on it. And I... Is there SEQA involved in that plan that they do the SEQA to?
Yes.
You can't spit without SEQA's approval.
It's just a plan.
Well, so that when you go to the next phase to do the shaded fuel break or the shaded reduction, that the plan's already there. So, everything's in place, so it's... So that you can keep moving forward and forward and forward. It was quite... It was a big grant. I think it might be the largest grant they've ever gotten. It was over $150,000. But they're asking for us to participate up to $7,000 for the forest...
Forest management.
Forest management. And that that is going to be taken care of through RCD. So, we'll pay RCD for that forestry management portion of that plan document. So, that's all this is. And so, we put end dates in there. The end date is the end of the grant, which is May 1st, 2020. So, this is... Won't go on into perpetuity. And we clarified a few little items in there, and it's pretty simple, and that's it.
Okay. So, the 7,000, is that a one-time payment, or is that annually through 2020?
One-time.
Thank you.
And it's up to... I think the estimate was less than 7,000. Any other questions?
I have to comment on this. I'm an associate director on the Butte County RCD, and so, I'll be abstaining on the vote on this, even though, as an associate director, I have no power for votes or anything else on the RCD, and even on commenting on this, so...
Okay.
So, if there's... I move for approval of the memorandum of understanding with the Butte Fire Safe Council and the Butte County Resource Conservation District, and authorize the interim district manager to execute the agreement.
Second.
Any more questions or anything? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Well, I voted now. That's a problem. I get in the habit of voting.
Stained. An abstention.
Oh, constructed wetlands. Okay.
We don't need them now.
Immediately. Oh, God.
We're going to get the permit changed, Bill.
Oh, yeah, right. There.
You're not going to read all that, are you?
I've been doing this for two years, and then I was told to give it off, and this is my chance of giving little bites of information on the time. And so, I'll add some things to it. I've got a big four here that I'm going to give you a copy of and through, just to the board members and Kevin. Now, there's monies available for wetlands. The one that was done up already actually ended up as an NRCS money through our tourists of all places. And now, the water district and sewage district have their own account, and it's all residential and small areas. So, I don't know how they worked it with pace engineering, or that district can tell you how they got that amount, a couple million dollars. So, there's others, and then there's a... In this file, there's a bunch of different things talking about grants and other things. All of this was set aside because it wasn't going anywhere with the previous law, and then with the recall team, the recall committee asked me to set aside, because it was divisive to what they were trying to do. So, now, I'm coming back with progress. So, this is... There's some nuclear information here. This is... Now, I've got another stack, this big, internet correspondent, engineering firms and so forth. There's several good engineering firms that have experience and backgrounds in building wetlands, constructed wetlands. The key word here is constructed wetlands. It ended in 1990, as an EPA decided that constructed wetlands was another way to go, and by putting that title on it and so forth, it meant that you could tear it down, move it, change it, do anything in the future. It didn't tie it up like wetlands had been tied up before. If you put... Before that came out, if you put the name "wetlands" on something, you were stuck with it forever. So, these constructed wetlands can be done. There's other ones that have come since, called engineer, and a few others for wildlife have another type. So, what it does is loosen this up over years. So, what's in there? Almost all those papers of recruited constructed wetlands talk about the situation in the town of Arkansas, the 17, 15, or 10 million dollar project versus something that I estimated is 2 to 3 million dollars on our own property, close to our water, without a lot of structural This is why other water districts all over the United States, all over the world, there's reports from Australia, there's an association of constructed wetlands in the United Kingdom. Israel has adopted it for... They actually have excess water now because of their conservation work and using wetlands in parks as another tool in their basket. So, it's got worldwide acceptance. I have a report out of Saudi Arabia of all places on constructed wetland. So, in California, we have districts in Southern California that are using constructed wetlands. One of the districts has been using it since 1990. They actually use it to purify up the water that comes out of the treatment plant, sewage and... And to put it back into the ground to keep the water clean. So, there are all sorts of uses. The oldest one we know of is at the Arcata that's still operating, and it's all a sewage plant operation, keeps sewage out of the bay there. So, how do we use it here? We've got all these examples, and these designs up all over the place. There's one of us, I talked before with the board, the Oregon, they put in 50, 60 acres there with the stuff, and they were able to drop water back into the Willamette River that they couldn't do before. It's metal, temperature was one of their problems. So, we have two problems. We have aluminum, and we have dichloromethyl bromone.
Dichloromethyl.
DCB.
And bromo... The chlorine... I'm going to call it chlorine byproduct, because that way I can do it without getting... We can do that work. I talked to an engineer that's with MCH2 Hill, and he's based out of Florida of all places, and he was telling me, "Well, that's an easy chemical. We put it through some waterfalls and moving on." And I'm watching myself as a short hat line. Well, what I'm talking about is taking out from our ponds and putting in the wetlands on a contour just right down from the last pond, even expanding the pond when necessary. I don't know on that part, to collect sediments. So, the wetlands would go on a contour. We would cut down a matureed forest in there. I don't know on that part, to collect sediments. So, the wetlands would go on a contour, we would cut down a matureed forest in there, I talked to a CDF, and it's a forester, and says, oh, those are all matured, and they're 100 years old, and you can see from the stumps they are, because that was logged when the dam was built, and so forth. So I did some engineering studies, which I'm not willing to stand behind, but it was a start, because I think what we need to do next will be to hire a consulting engineering firm, or there's another consultant that's out of the Bay Area for things like this. Do go over the figures to make sure they're right. So the figures are, we're working with this polished wastewater, remove chlorine byproduct, alum, aluminum and tonne, and part will be tied up with a set of iron soil and the soil coming together with the aluminum will chemically, and actually the aluminum, it's not a great quantity, I've got my figures from those tables on this. That's when I started doing this, this study or a little report on it, it was handwritten and just photocopied at the time. This was prepared over here, and it was never presented before because of the conflicts and with management myself. Okay, the site selection, look up existing ponds, create wetlands on the contour, we have deep permeable soil, we've got reports in here on a soil report from NRCS, which needs to be gone over simply by hand, or with the vacuum, making sure that the soils are actual. Now, it's not only about 80%, so we have deep permeable soil, the depth is set at 80 inches if it's still going there. We have the trees to be harvested, it's a mildly acid soil, there's no alkalinity or anything in it. Okay, specifics would be, they'd be approximately 18 inches deep, all earth construction, no plastic or pay bottom, no minerals in it, because we have this permeable soil underneath it, so it's gonna recharge the water table in effect. Detention time, this is real critical, and wetlands to be able to get the chemical results and interaction with all living things in it, and the detention times, in this case it's three to four days, because there's no nitrogen to deal with on this. And I've got formulas in here, and they're taken from the EPA studies, they use the EPA formulas, and, anyway, it comes down to, my figures were 4.59 acres, it's all detention time of three days, made it up to 10 acres. And it would be, I can almost show it to you on the map. Here's the ponds, one and two, and the proposed wetlands would go here. Now whether there's, depends on how high you want to put one on the slope, we, and I don't know where the property line is exactly for PID, so this is PID property in here. So we already have piping existing, pumping up to these and hooking together, are, where we pull samples right now is in the ponds themselves, and so if we can move it down to this point, where we pull the sample, the only thing I did get is cost us $200, to, we ran some water down the hill, it's not in a pipe, went down the hill, and with the chlorine, the dichloro or chlorine byproduct.
Dissipated.
Considerably went down from up here to, here's your mixing point, maybe a mixing point could be considered. So it went down. Aluminum went up, because the only explanation we had was it's open ground that went through, didn't go through a closed pipe. So picked up aluminum in here, and that's why at other times I've said to you, we need to test around these ponds for aluminum. Now, the people, the waterfall, the people aren't asking for any of that, I talked to them on the phone about it, and they don't care. All they're worried about what's in the pond, wherever our testing point is. But we should be able to find out for our own use, our own design, what's in the soils, some soil samples on different things, and then the wetlands would fall a contour, this, then it would drop down through a pipe into the lake, and that would be, hopefully your sampling point, that we may do something like this, where you could get the best test for our use on it. And hopefully, by going through the wetlands, and if they do what I've been told in my research, they can do, I have a study out of Canada on tying up aluminum, alum byproducts, and the actual testing was ran up there by a graduate student, and it was removed below the points that we need. So it actually worked to pull out one, it was a small test. One of the things that the engineering firms we have talked to in the past has suggested that we put in a test somewhere in here for a testing, to see, small wetlands, mind you, and actually, the one of the companies or groups down in Southern California, that's what they did initially in 1990, is they put in a testing, ran it for six months to a year, and then they came back and closed it, and you re, they have quite an extensive report, they're still using it, they have a stat biologist, they're talking about 200 acres plus of wetlands they have now in service, but they did the engineering, they didn't work. So there's a lot of things that could be done, or may have to be done, including going over my figures to see if they hold any water. But I think it's all feasible for what is, can be done, the cost of it should be anywhere from 2 to 3 million dollars, keep in mind we're doing very little concrete, heavy work. Actually, I work with a man with California Water Power Association, he builds wetlands around gray lodge, only they're wetlands that are this deep, and we plant plants in there that hold the water, he's engineering right now a couple hundred acres of wetlands down there. From the years I've worked with him, he's probably done almost 1,000 acres now, down there, and other places in the southern part of the county. That's all private on public lands or private lands together, it's a mixture. He hires farmers that do leveling in their fields, and that's how he gets cheap dirt moving, he does his own engineering, then he has a civil engineer sign off on, on the design. And to me, to go forward, what we need to do is hire a consulting firm, a legitimate consulting firm, as far as I'm concerned, I don't think what we've done in the past is, either it wasn't legitimate, or we were told about this idea or that idea, and they didn't pencil on it. It costs just as much as the concrete plants. So this should be, all the advantages are, we own the land, we don't have to do a lot of concrete or things, we can do it with people that are available in the area, we can do it with consulting engineers, and we will do as a design, and we, there's five firms that I'm aware of, some of them had national standing, some of them are just in California, that would be able to be designing this, or talk, doing the necessary work to lay it out. This is not a polishing operation that you do at sewage, this is potable water, and one of the most difficult things to find was, these ideas are at sewage plants and their newest design and all of that, this is just potable water. And like I talked to an engineer on the phone yesterday, and I said, you know what, any exactly potable water, wetlands, because it's so simple what we want to get out of here. We're not talking about nitrogen, we're not talking about chemicals that come down out of toilets, pharmaceuticals, and all that I have to renew, we're not talking about a lot of organic matter, and he's gave me a couple of references, one of them is the one in Southern California, there's another one up here that I have to follow up on, but they've done potable water. And potable water, that's why it's cheaper even than the stuff out of the sewage plant, because you're not having to deal with everything. The people up in Cottonwood actually had to put their own lab in, and the reason they had to put their own lab is the sewage part of their wetlands, they're connected to a sewage plant, besides potable water, and so they're, the way they put it in and everything, the engineering firm, and it was cheaper for them to put their own lab in to do the work than to have it out, because they have to do all these tests because of the sewage. I don't know what was coming, I think we'd have a fairly simple testing regime in this, and a lot of the questions are still unanswered, but I think this is a way we can end up doing something to meet the NPDS permit, let me finish, and drop it back into the megalya, so we save the 500 acre feet or whatever it was estimated at one time, and go ahead with our affairs, and try to take advantage of just working on potable water. Yes, Cliff?
So, if the wetlands worked, but if, if the company that we hired came back and got the regional water quality control to say, here's your limits, and we were able to achieve the limits with our current method, why would we spend $4 million on a wetland?
But anyway, as far as a dollar expense.
Well, but why would we waste any money on a wetland if we could dump it back in the megalya?
If you can figure out how to do it without, I think we're gonna end up changing the ponds no matter what we do, but that might be part of it, that's the other part. So if you can figure out how to change the chemicals coming out of the plant, or use different chemicals and so forth, those are all tools we should be looking at.
Well, we're getting more lax limits that we can meet, that we're currently meeting, such as our interim levels, in which case, we can just, at the most widen and improve our settling ponds and call it a day.
Okay, what you're dealing with on limits are politics. Now, right now, I think we'll look at less limits probably, because of what the Trump administration's doing and how they're dismantling EPA right now. But that doesn't mean four years from now, we don't have a liberal environmental group come in, and the federal government, and decide to come back and raise or lower the limits even more, so you're talking things that we don't have control. I'm just saying this, this is to me, we don't, we decided not to put in a sewage plant, so I think this is another way we can go. I'll give out the figures to you, yes, Ann?
So, so you're talking about constructed wetlands with no under drains or any, all earth, all solid earth?
Yep.
And then, so you're gonna pump the water up 10 acres and contour it this way to come down?
Yeah, it'll come down through several layers of wetland, each wetland would stick out a little bit more.
So are you talking about wetlands, or are you talking about channels, just contour channels that are gonna?
No, they're wetlands, they're 18 inches deep, they're flat, they have a grade of 1 to 2%.
So they'll be planted?
And the water flows through them, these are called surface water wetlands, you can look them up on.
Yeah, I have looked them up, so you're talking about planted, planted wetlands?
Oh, yes, and we plant it to vegetation, you'll use everything you can to get biological agents working in it, it's actually a living plant that you're gonna have.
Okay.
Things gonna be alive, and that's one of the reasons the management is much less than others.
And so then, where would the water discharge?
Water would discharge wherever that you want it to, into the wet, into the megalya reservoir.
What's our max discharge of that recycled water, Jim? Worst possible scenario?
400,000 gallons a day, but we want to plant up 2 million.
2 million, so if we need four days retention, then we need 8 million gallons holding capacity. How many acres is that gonna take for a wetland's not to become saturated at 8 million gallons a day? I mean, 8 million gallons of.
I got from Bill Taylor in some of the figures, 10 million dollars, 10 million gallons a day, 10% of it is 1 million gallons, and you're gonna deal with 1 million gallons of water in the wetlands. I thought I made another copy.
That's 4 million gallons, that seems like a lot of water for 10 acres.
So.
So Bill, we'd still have to have a NPTA's permit because we're discharging them too. So we still have the permit, we wouldn't get out of it with the permit.
Yeah, no, we're not getting rid of it, we have to live with it. And in the future, if they tighten it up, and you have to change the wetlands, to do that, if you have to make them bigger, whatever, you can do that.
But it would still make sense then for us to proceed with the regional board like we're doing, to try to get the lowest limits possible, whether we go with a wetland or whatever.
If you want to do all that, remember you can get, hopefully they will raise them up because of what's changing with the EPA, and all the people who are looking for work or retired others.
And did your estimate include taking a pipe up the 10 acres to pump that water and also a pump station?
That's why, I don't pretend to be an engineer, I just try to figure out what the detention time is, how many gallons, from the information I got from the data. Now, and as far as the amount of alum, how long in the water, the amount of the chlorine byproducts in the water, so that was, I was able to figure, and then I, what I get is in these files, there's EPA formulas, formulated in the 90s on how to figure the detention times and so forth. So I don't even know if those formulas are still good today, but being I was doing it on my own, there was very little help from the district, other than Bill Taylor and I think, and that's why you see this pile of stuff here, because I went through all this stuff, I don't know how many hours I put into it, but to me, it was the way to change things, so that we got away from sewage plant. And you guys are all more knowledgeable on the previous board, you're willing to listen and look into this stuff, and we're willing to try anything we can to meet those permits without breaking the bank. And so it may turn out it's just working ponds, and so there was a $2 million proposal, and I ran across it from the original engineering firm we had, just to change the ponds, and it's a lion, and had a special way to move on, and that's kept just, kept growing.
Were you gonna have a cost of pump and everything too up here?
Well, yeah, you, they already got a pump, it works up here, the plumbing already exists in the ponds, and it's working today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Bill?
Thank you.
Next thing on the agenda is amendment to employment agreement for Kevin, and, and this is your baby.
I stole Cliff's format, I liked it when you did the changes, if you don't mind.
It works, it works.
So I'll just read it, page 4, section 9, performance evaluation of the present contract reads, "The district general manager shall evaluate employees' performance annually. In addition, every year, the board of directors and employee will set goals and objectives for the ensuing year. The board of directors shall evaluate employee as to his performance related to the agreed-upon goals and objectives. The chief financial officer, CFO, is an employee of the board of directors. As such, the board should conduct a performance evaluations for this position. Present language could foster a situation whereby the district manager could exert undue influence on CFO, and thereby undermine the fiscal policies of the district. We as directors want to ensure compliance with financial policies and procedures of the district, as well as financial policies set forth by this board. Action requested, replace present language stated above on page 4, section 9, performance evaluation of the contract with the following. With input from the district manager, the board of directors shall evaluate employees' performance annually. In addition, the board of directors and employees shall set goals and objectives for the ensuing year."
Makes good sense to.
Emily, do you see any problems with that?
Makes sense to me, yeah.
I don't see any problem with it, but I do think that, I mean, the language that I like the most is the input from the district manager, because your exposure to Kevin is limited to one particular facet of his job, right? So whether it's Kevin or somebody else, you're gonna want input from somebody who sees the Monday through Friday, 8 to 5 performance of the daily tasks, so as long as that's in there, I don't have an objection.
I don't like the word shell, but.
That was for Dan.
I used the word shell, and I got, I got railed from that.
I don't think I can make a motion on this, because I guess I have to, I'm not sure.
We can leave it at shell, I don't have a problem.
Someone else can make a motion. Is there any discussion?
I will say though, I imagine that, and I don't have Kevin's contract in front of me, but I imagine there's something in there that says amendments have to be agreed upon.
Yeah.
So that may be a necessary conversation.
And I spoke to Kevin before I put this on the agenda.
Yeah. I don't see a problem with.
Gives more autonomy to the CFO, correct?
Yes, yes.
So.
The only thing that I just came to mind was a performance, being that you, as the board is, is giving the performance evaluation, that if upon a negative evaluation or a unsatisfactory evaluation, that there shall be a performance, like, isn't there some type of language in there that states that there's a action plan to correct the negative evaluation sometimes? I don't know if it's in.
I would be concerned if you were Jim Carrey, because your CFO side would be arguing with your district manager.
Exactly, I'm gonna give myself an evaluation in a couple months. I mean, I, it doesn't bother me, I mean, truly, honestly, it's kind of, you guys have been doing my evaluation with the input of the district manager, it's just that the district manager does it first, and then you guys do it second. This kind of would be, I guess, all at the same time.
Yeah, but in the, in the present contract, it makes it seem that the general manager is really responsible for your evaluation, and we are only going to separately set goals for you with our part of it.
That's how it reads, but it's been, it's been performed differently.
Yeah, so I wanna, I wanna make it, make it so, yeah.
I have a problem with it.
Yeah, I mean, I agree, it's currently written, it's almost like two tracks, one, the GM or the district manager evaluates, and two, you guys set goals, and you get to say whether he met those specific goals.
Because you are our employee.
Yeah, and just to give you a background on this, this, this position has evolved, so it started out like as a finance and accounting manager, so there wasn't a lot of interaction with the board as much as there has been in the past, and it was more of kind of that job duty. So this contract, the original contract was written for that job description, and then it's just kind of evolved into what it has become today. So I, I do think that I work more for the board now than I did when I was first hired, so I have no problem with it.
Thank you, Ann, for catching that.
Well, I move that we accept those changes, make those changes.
Second.
Any further discussion, any comments from the audience?
So, and then that will be documented with a separate addendum to the contract, and then executed in the same manner that the agreement was.
So we should bring it back to the board as a, no?
No, it'll just be, it'll just be added to it, yeah.
Just add to the.
We need to direct you to amend the contract.
Okay.
Is there already recourse in, in the contract, what you were referring to? Is there already recourse in, in the contract that you were referring to?
There isn't. It's unstated, but I, I, I'm not worried about it.
Well, I mean, just, we could, we could put it in there. I guess that's what I'm trying to say, yeah.
Most evaluations do have a way of handling what the evaluation produced.
You're saying there's another clause in your contract that says?
No, I just, normally when you do a board evaluation, there's corrective action.
Right.
Kind of in there, that you can't just go, you got an unsatisfactory evaluation, we're firing you for cause.
Oh.
The board, the board in the past has used a numerical system to evaluate employees, which I don't recommend to anybody, but any re. And, and each director would give evaluation verbally. This all in a closed session, so I can't say too much about it. And, and Kevin would reply and answer the questions, and usually he passed with flying colors. So I think it's excellent to have this changed. We tried to move to it several years ago. We managed to get Kevin divorced a little bit from it. This will take care of that problem.
Been moved and seconded.
So do we need to, do we need to make that move that we direct you to make appropriate changes to his contract as part of this?
I, I would just suggest that the motion say approve the amendment as set forth in the, in the backup materials and direct legal counsel to prepare the document.
Okay.
You got that, Georgina?
I approve that in my second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Board Education Manager Philip.
This is actually, was brought up by, by Mickey Rich, our IT System Manager. For having maybe an open agenda item on every agenda that's, that a staff member or a board member could suggest having just a informational item on an educational topic of the district. Her thoughts were you could put in there, how to read, there's her examples, how to read a financial statement, how the district installs pipeline, what Mickey does in IT thingies. You know, those type of things that just have an open, an open selection, almost like a legal report, but like an educational section on there, that if, if it comes up and it's available, that we, we take advantage of it, and if not, it's just kind of a pass item. But I'll let Mickey kind of explain what her thoughts were.
My thoughts were just to keep it real simple, because I want you to say yes to it, because I think it's continuing education, you know, about the district and about how things change is good. So the item would just be a space in the agenda that you guys can expect every time to read, you know, and it might be, you know, just an article on governments, and then the information's going to the full board. You know, it's not just one person, you know, going out and reading a magazine, you know, and it's just a space. So, um, that's it.
So this would be a vehicle that staff can ta, bring things to our attention?
Yeah, so an example that I have been thinking of, that if you would approve this, and I was just, I would maybe put an item in here that educates the board on some, some changes to viewership because of the Facebook Live video. And so that might be one thing. Another thing would be if we change a report, it would just kind of detail why that report has been changed or a difference in it. And a ben, an added benefit to this is that the public who reads, you know, the agenda can also read this educational. So it could be really helpful, like helping the public understand how to read our budget or our monthly financial statements when they're not familiar.
I obviously like the term Cliff notes, but maybe we should call these Mickey notes. So who, who actually puts this in every time? Is there input from staff and board and, or is this just something that you're plugging in, or?
Well, I imagine that once we get this started, I'm gonna start getting a list of things, right? And then we'll just kind of prioritize and put, put it in the, you know, prioritize what Kevin, what goes in there. And then would this be, this is something that would the board president help choose? I don't, I think we would just put it in.
He, he approves all agenda items, so.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Or the agenda. So it could just be, it could just be a standing item on the agenda if, if we get to ten fifteen and no one wants to get educated tonight.
We just delete it.
Yeah, my idea was that you wouldn't have to discuss it if you didn't want. It would be informational and you can read it. I would always try to keep it to one page.
So it'd be written, not oral?
Yes. Yes, a written.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks for asking that question.
And you're, you're in charge of that?
I will.
You will?
But this was.
Okay, so we need your approval if we want to put an educational item in there.
I, I asked for it because I do, I mean, it's the board's agenda, and you guys have kind of control over that. So if you didn't want to get it mucked up with some educational item in there, that would be your decision. And if you wanted to add that to it, then I think it needed to be your decision. So we were looking for a direction or, or a motion from you guys.
So Mickey, these would be articles that are already published or something like that. It wouldn't be something that we're, you know, a staff member would be spending three hours putting together something for informa, or would it?
Could be. Could be if you felt passionate enough about it.
Maybe it depends. Good point, yeah. If, maybe if it's important, you know.
May, maybe Dan and, and Bill are always saying that he'll leave it to us three because they don't know anything about chemistry. Maybe we teach him a little bit about chemistry.
Hey, there you are.
And they teach us a little bit about wetlands, you know.
I can get smart, right?
Yeah, I was just, was thinking of staff, staff time being spent on this. That's all I'm kind of getting at.
I don't see it.
Let me go to chemistry.
We just released Jim of the meeting notes.
I wouldn't anticipate three hours a month spent.
Well, you guys are experts.
I wouldn't anticipate three hours a month spent on it, you know. I, I don't think it would take much time at all. I think there's already, if you guys approve it, there's probably already a developing list of things to go over here.
I guess we could sure try it for a while. If we don't like it, we can say eh.
Well, it certainly doesn't hurt to learn.
Let's try.
And if it, and if it becomes redundant, we just don't do it anymore.
Well, one thing you know about this board, if they don't like it, they'll tell you, hopefully nicely. And I do have a question for you. It goes back to the meeting today.
Aqua Hawk?
Aqua Hawk, I noticed the, the, how many people did we lose? We went down.
I had the same question, and so I asked Aqua Hawk what happened, maybe that, I thought that maybe they were calculating it differently in closing accounts. And posed the question, they were confused too. And then when, when I got the, the, the recent reports, the numbers are back up. And I noticed that it went from, I think the number reported was like twenty fourteen or twenty four. Either way, it went up exactly ten. So I think it was a typo. That's my guess.
Did it one up ten?
Well, the fact that it went down, I think they just wrote a one instead of a two. Yes.
We'll look forward to it going up next.
It's, it's going up, definitely.
Thank you.
I've got one education, education item that you might want to consider. Of course, maybe everybody else is a whole lot smarter and knows how to do it easily. I'm not tied into Aqua Hawk yet. Don't know how to. I'm zero techie. Maybe you could come help my wife and set it up on our computer or something.
You can actually have Aqua Hawk, even if you don't even have a computer, do it.
And we created a video.
Yeah, yeah.
Really?
It's just a couple, we had created three videos, and they're about two minutes long each, so I'll give you the links to those.
We're getting educated.
I'll get my wife to contact you.
Yeah, there you go.
I know how to turn my computer on, retrieve my emails, that's it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much, Mickey.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Director's comments.
Shall we first?
No, no. Oh, yeah, we got closed session.
They're plugged in here before a closed session, folks.
Well, that's so that you guys don't have to wait to hear our closing comments, because you know you want to hear it.
I'll make the motion. Move approval of a standing agenda item for board education.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Director's comments. Just start with Dan on there.
Okay. Several quick items. Stan McKetchin, it would be, it's too bad that we didn't have more people here tonight. I was gonna mention it earlier, but recognize him for his presence on the board before and the article today in the paper. I don't know how, how many of you read it, but the editorial was very well done. If I had written one, it would have sounded almost identical.
That was in the Post today?
Yes, it was in the Post today. Just a very intelligent man, a great sense of humor. I just loved him to pieces and neat guy. Of course, you, living across the street from him, probably knew him pretty well and everything.
I have some of Stan's artwork on my property. We, we went down when he had the dispute with the neighbors and the community got together and we took our trailers and trucks and backhoes down there and we moved everything. Either on his property or somewhere along Wayland Road to somebody else's property, so that people could see it when they drove by. I got stuck with my neighbor putting some awfully gaudy little airplanes on the road, but I guess they're all today.
It, it's interesting at one time.
I have the Jesus with the hands up, so.
It's interesting at one time when the town was gonna be redoing, as you enter a town, just past Neal Road, on the right side, they have that little garden area, blah, blah, blah. I was on the council at the time, and Stan McKetchin talked to me about it. And we were gonna do something really neat there to just set out our town. My wife and I, in some travels, had taken pictures of a town up in the middle of Washington State. That entering their town, they had metal art that gave kind of a rolling picture of their town. And, and Stan and I came up with a thing where we were gonna have trains with logs on it, with carts and all, just have just a neat historic, just a brief historic picture done in art. And he had sketched it all out. And when we presented it to the town council, the town manager at the time and everybody just went. And now we've got that thing that you can't even read where it says Town of Paradise, because the reflection is always so bad. Somebody used to paint it black. Anyway, that's all beside the point. But Stan McKetchin was just a neat guy, loved by everybody in the community. His contribution to the town has been phenomenal. And if one of the things that he had suggested a few years ago would have been put into action, actually, the PID or the Town of Paradise could have made a huge amount of revenue. Back when water was becoming very popular in bottles, he said, "We've got outstanding water. Why don't we have Paradise Water or Water of Paradise or something like that, and bottle our own water?" Right there, we could, I, I think that it could have been huge. And a lot of us tried to get behind him and start something, but it just never took off. Anyway, we, we'll miss him. He's a neat guy. Okay, talk too much.
His funeral's Saturday.
Friday, tomorrow, Friday, Friday, at the Senior Center. Yeah.
What time?
Gonna be gone.
I think it was five.
Oh, brother, I read it, but then I, I'm gonna be out of town, so I'm gonna miss it.
Yeah, but it's Friday, it's Friday.
It's Friday afternoon at Senior Center. Uh, I ran into, and we keep hearing nice things about the PID crews, and I'm working on Country Club, got a couple of projects, and they're working on Country Club right now. And I just dropped in and visited the crew for a few minutes. Guys work hard, they're just gentlemen. Could not say anything better about the crews. Even the crew chief leader, I don't know what his official name was, was down in that ditch just whipping them. Boy, they were working their tushes off. Anyway. Okay, one question. I was contacted by Doug Teeter. I almost called and put this on the agenda, and then I thought, eh, I'll just talk to you guys about it. Doug Teeter called and asked me if I would talk to this board about the possibility of putting it on the agenda. And if we chose to put it on the agenda, we could. He would come and talk to us. He's interested in pursuing the possibility of PID, Town, PRPD, all being under one roof. Uh, you know, one entity, not, not having all of the different agencies. And I said, "I would talk to you guys about it." I personally am against it, but that's something that, it's, I'm not one, I'm just one of five. Do you want to put it on a future? Town, PID, PRPD, Paradise Recreation and Parks District. Do we want to put it on the agenda next time? Have him come talk to us? It's up to you all.
It would mean your job.
Oh, yeah. Yay, then let's put it on the agenda. Yeah, it doesn't matter to me.
I think we just, I think we stay the way we are. You've got the Sewage District.
Again, like I said, I.
Other issues that wouldn't.
I told him I am completely against it, but I will talk to our board.
If it's a special district, we could take it over to Sewer.
Yeah, the benefits of being a, a special district and irrigation.
The advantages of under one roof is there are monetary savings to be gained. But does that offset the disadvantages? I don't know. When you have a town making stupid decisions like turning Skyway into.
Well, here's the thing, here's the thing, Dan. I know very little about being a town council person. You've been on the council before.
I still don't know anything about it.
Okay, but, but I'll bet you that collectively, we know a whole lot more about water than anybody on the town council.
Yeah, I can guarantee that you three do.
And I, I think that sometimes you gotta specialize, and if you don't, you end up with everything being mediocre. And I personally had to eat stew when I was a kid, and I'm tired of stew. So I think I like to mix my own food as I put it in my mouth.
So I need input from you all. I'm completely against the plan, but.
I, I am too. I can see all sorts of conflicts in the management. Actually, they would, whether they realize, Doug realized or not, he'd add to the management team of whoever the surviving organization would be. And there would be, you know, different things. And then I mentioned before, like on the towns doing the sewage issue, what I've been told and found out that, when we talked about it for a short time, that if you have a sewage thing, you have to have a completely separate department, all separate tools, a separate work yard, separate everything. And it only comes together at the management level, which means suddenly you have a water manager and a sewage manager. And so you haven't made any savings there. And as far as park and rec, they're huge. They're, he must, they're over the Concow and they're down and all over the place. They're, it's a big district, much three or four times the size of this district.
You got it.
Jim has trouble convincing us about stuff with the water people. Let him try to convince the town council.
Well, if we don't, if the, if the majority of us don't agree with the concept, then it won't be on the agenda. But if the majority of you.
I, I would, I would be favorable to pursuing more sharing of resources with, with these other agencies and maybe having agreements to share resources.
Well, we're doing that.
Yeah, I know, but even more so, I could see that. That would be, there are some overlaps, there's no doubt about it.
Right, and that can be done and is being done, like the fire hydrant thing and snowplows from the winter. So there is that, and if we ever chose to try to increase that, we, we could do that on our own.
Director comments are supposed to be kind of non-discussion.
Not without delivering here. Stop.
Director, director comments are supposed to be non-discussion.
Well, that's, that's nice. I'm glad.
Director's comments.
So, is general consensus that we?
It sounds like it, so that's.
Okay, it won't go the agenda. I'll call him and tell him that we.
I don't, I mean, we already just voted it down, if you want to look at it that way.
It's pretty much a dead.
Yeah.
I didn't see that on the agenda.
We're not supposed to be doing that.
I don't think it needs to be in the agenda.
Well, it wouldn't, you can't vote.
Oh, yeah, we didn't, we, we, no decisions were made other than just we're not interested.
Let's stop right now and I'll remind you about director's comments rules, because we just blew them all apart. You can only talk about the subjects. Nobody else can comment on what the director's commenting on. He or she can say whatever they want, but nobody comments.
No decisions.
That's it. We go on to the next one. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Anne?
No comment.
No comment.
Uh, I wanna, I wanna thank Jim. Thank you for all the work you've done on, on the regional board stuff and the different RFPs and starting and stopping and all that. I really appreciate it. And I also want to agree with Dan. I, I went out and saw the crews last week, working on the pipeline, and I was really impressed and really happy to talk to the guys. I really had a good feel for camaraderie that was going on there and, and good work, so appreciate it, yeah.
Thank you.
As the Indian in Josie Wales said, endeavor to persevere.
Well, we, since I can't comment on what you just said, I just want to thank everybody for the good rapport we've maintained in spite of being disagreeable about certain issues or maybe certain thing the board is. issues and maybe certain thing the board is still like getting a really cool drink of water on a hot day compared to what I used to go through. So we're going into closed session now. And do you want to say something more? No?
Because we tabled that recruitment.
You can hang around if you want. So when we come back out, we can say we're done.